Welcome, everyone. This is the June 5th meeting of the Yellow Springs Village Council. We are continuing on from an executive session we had that started at 6:00. The first item of business is very exciting. We have a presentation of a scholarship award to a local student. And someone is here from AMP to do that?
Yes.
Great. Harry Phillips.
Hi, good evening. Harry Phillips with AMP, Director of Marketing. And you're right, I do have very exciting news here. One of your students graduating seniors is the recipient of the Richard H. Gorsuch Scholarship. And AMP gives out eight scholarships a year throughout the whole footprint of AMP, and that includes 135 member communities in nine states. And the Gorsuch, like the Wright, there's four of each, is awarded to graduating senior from somebody who works within the city, town, borough. And the Wright is actually available to any young person in the community who's graduating. So, and then there's actually sometimes that a couple of our communities will win votes. But this year, for sure, we're here for Yellow Springs, for Tristan. And Tristan did quite a great job here in attaining the scholarship. As I said, there's four scholarships for the Gorsuch. They're $2,500 each. And to date, we've given out over $308,000 since 1988 for the scholarships. It's in memory of Richard H. Gorsuch, who's the late president of AMP. And as I said, this is awarded to a young graduating student of somebody who works within the city or community. There were 17 students nominated for the Gorsuch Scholarship. Students had to write an essay about public power. Finalists then took a test about public power. And then the AMP Board of Trustees approved four recipients. And of course, that's why I'm here this evening. A little bit about Tristan Giardulo. Tristan is the son of Denise Swinger and Joseph Giardulo. Denise is the Planning and Zoning Administrator for the village. Tristan is a graduate of Yellow Springs High School. He is currently enrolled in the Sinclair Community College in the Unmanned Aerial Systems Program. He is working towards an Applied Science degree. After Sinclair, Tristan would like to attend a four-year university to get a degree in geographical information systems. He was extremely involved in school and the community, and these are some of his highlights. He was a member of the National Society of Leadership, academic invite. Tristan volunteered for Four Paws for Ability, where he took a dog to visit a housebound senior citizen for a few hours a week. He also fostered a dog for six months to get him socialized for advanced training. These activities were part of Tristan's senior project. Tristan was a member of the track and field team, as well as the soccer team. His senior year, Tristan helped the varsity soccer team bring home a district win in the sweep, as the sweeper slash defender. He also volunteered for many community activities and programs. We find Tristan to be a very talented young man with a promising future. And on behalf of the AMP Board of Trustees, I'd like to award him $2,500.
Thanks to AMP. And congratulations, Tristan.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mom. And Sis. You can go now. You're welcome to stay, Tristan. I'm sure you want to, but... That's great. And it's great that a community partner like AMP is able to support our community like that. And we'll find out, Johnny Burns also has been well-supported, thanks to his good work with AMP. Any other announcements? Brian, I know you have some.
Yeah, I'll mention a few things. First of all, if everyone doesn't know, on June 15th, the Little Art Theater...
Is it really?
Happy birthday. All right. It's Karen's birthday, and we are celebrating it at the Little Art Theater, along with Andy Holyoke's retirement party from 7:00 to 9:00. The public's invited. I know that we'll be showing Steven Julia's The Last Reel, and also sharing stories. So, it's going to be a great time. Also, I wanted to make sure that people save the date for June 24th, which is this year's Yellow Springs Pride, always a very important celebration here in the village. And lastly, and this will segue into, I know Karen's got an announcement. This Saturday is the Strawberry Festival, which is at the Presbyterian Church, and it's part of an amazing event that we have on June 10th. Karen?
Street Fair is Saturday. If anybody, I think Alex is still looking for volunteers. So, if anybody wants something to do at 6:00 Saturday morning, we could probably use... Actually, I think this is a time when we could use volunteers at the end of the day. So, it would be, you could get your sleep and still come out, and then head over to the Music Fest. So, we still do need volunteers. Be patient. We do everything we can to try to keep, I don't know if we can keep traffic down, but at least to keep it under control. And we hope it will be a good day, and we know it's a great day for all of our merchants and vendors.
And nonprofits.
And nonprofits especially, yes. Any other announcements? Nope? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the minutes of May 15th and the minutes of May 16th, special meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Review of the agenda. Is there anything... I believe, Marian, did you want to add the small discussion item?
I had a question about the minutes in the last meeting. Patty was going, not to approve the, I mean, I approved the minutes.
Oh, okay.
But it noted that Patty was going to come back with some information about the Empower Organization.
Yes, and I have emailed him twice, asking for the references, and he has promised them to me both times, and I have yet to receive them. And I actually just wrote myself a note to email him yet again.
Thank you. The HRC report was supposed to be scheduled for this meeting. Steve McQueen didn't see it on the agenda, and so he's getting married the next time, but he's going to get another HRC person. So, let's put it on for the 19th.
For the 19th.
I'd also like, for new business, like to say something about the Paris Accord and the mayor's, whatever that is, from the mayor's, the United States mayor's, supporting the Paris Accord. And I'd also like to have a brief discussion about the housing needs update, next step.
Okay. So, we'll put that under Old Business? Okay.
And these would also be short discussions, but I think we need to add a brief discussion about the second community conversation related to the CBE. I guess that's old business. And I'd like to briefly talk about our meeting related to the Complete Streets Workshop, which maybe is new business.
Okay. Brian, would you review the petitions and communications?
Yes. So, we had our treasurer's report submitted from Rachel McKinley, highlighting some transfers of funds and whatnot, which was all an effort to get a better return on the limited options that you have as a municipality for investing your funds. We also received a letter from Don Johnson, highlighting that we should table our decision about the proposed Cresco Medical Marijuana Plant. Also, Catherine Vanderheiden highlighted that she thought that this business would be great for the community, and highlighted affordability. Mary Stuckenberg, who's the Executive Director of the Community Children's Center, wanted to thank the village for providing bike lights for the kids to keep them safe. That was an initiative that we started a couple of months ago. And Judy, maybe you can say something about where people can get lights now if they need them, when you, I don't know, now or later?
Right. About 10 feet from you right now, because there are about 300 of them in my office. But you can always get them at the police department at any time. And in fact, officers normally have them in their vehicles when they're driving around to give out, in case they see you. And you're not highly visible, but you can always stop by dispatch, the dispatch window, or ask me, or send me an email, I'll get you one.
Thanks, Judy.
They're really nice colors, too.
We also had a notice about the Five Rivers Green County Health Center, which is opening in Xenia. And not only will they provide medical services if you don't have a place to go, but they also will help folks with applying for Medicaid if they do not have insurance. And finally, we had the mayor's report for this month. And one thing notable is that it did show an uptick in misdemeanors coming to the mayor's court. I think a lot of people have followed that we've been, and actually, Brian Carlson has been pushing for more active use of mayor's court, and so I think that does reflect that. And Brian, when you do your report, maybe you could share the thank you note that you received by email. So, I'll let you do that.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Next, we're moving into public hearings and legislation. We have the second reading and public hearing of Ordinance 2017. Judith, you've been asking that we move the, now that I just stopped, that we move the reports, the staff reports. Let's go ahead and do that. So, we'll do the manager's report, the assistant village manager, the interim chief, and then the clerk's report. And then we'll go to legislation.
I think we've been doing those after legislation.
Right, after legislation. We have? After legislation, okay. Excuse me. Okay. Okay, so, second reading and public hearing, 2017-11.
Just by title?
Yes.
Okay, this is approving a conservation easement to the Tecumseh Land Preservation Association for a portion of the property known as the Glass Farm.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
So, move. Second.
Okay. Patty? And I know Krista, I believe Krista's here, so...
Yes. This is the easement we've been working on for quite a while around the wetland area to go hand-in-hand with the Clean Ohio Grant to restore some of the area to its natural habitat. There is a 100-foot access on the north side of the property that is not included in this easement. It does have an allowance for an unimproved or slightly improved, I believe, trail. And also, for potential work on the culvert, should we need to enlarge that at any future date. Krista, did I miss anything?
No. I think that's good. Brian raised a few questions at the last meeting that are addressed now, so it dispels things out a little bit more clearly.
Any comment, question from council? This is the second reading. I will open the public hearing for comment from citizens. Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Judy, would you please call the votes?
Yes. Hemphley.
Yes.
Leave us hanging. McQueen?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Houche?
Yes.
Wintra?
Yes. Okay. So, the next piece of legislation is long-awaited. It's nearly six months since we had the unfortunate incident New Year's Eve, and our police chief resigned at that point. And a few months, or a few weeks later, we did appoint an interim chief who's been serving until now. And council has gone through a pretty deliberative process with staff, hearing from citizens, trying to decide how we were going forward, hearing also from the Justice System Task Force and other groups that have been working on this. And it was decided about a month or so ago that we would do an internal-only process. We did receive three applications from folks within the police department. And there have been, there's been a deliberate, a very good public process that unfortunately I wasn't able to be at, but it was, I know it was very well-attended. I understand this room was quite full. Council had the opportunity to interview all three candidates individually, and Patty has contacted all of the council members since. And I'm pleased that Patty has made a decision after consulting with a lot of folks, and I'd like to turn it over to Patty to make the announcement.
Thank you. As Karen noted, this was a long and involved process. I continued even over the weekend, getting input from any number of people. As we traveled to Illinois and back on Friday, I got numerous emails about all of the candidates. I have made my decision, and I am appointing Brian Carlson as permanent chief. And I would like to add that the other two candidates, which were Dave Meister and Tim Spratlin, both stellar candidates, both have wonderful attributes. I hope they see a bright future with this department, because I see that for them. And I'm sure that these guys are wonderful officers, and that we can all move forward together. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. We do have a piece of legislation, right? Do we have a resolution that we need to pass?
In full or by title only?
By title only.
All right.
Or no, just, is it long?
Hmm, it's pretty long.
Yeah, just by title only, then?
Sorry, I got to skip the part about how great you are, but... Resolution, Resolution 2017-26, approving the hiring of Brian Carlson as chief of police.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
So, move. Second.
Do we, anything additional to be said?
No, the, I believe Judy is going to put the contract terms online tomorrow. So, those will be readily available to anyone who wants to see them.
It will be effective as of...
It will be effective as of tomorrow morning, when I swear Brian in as the permanent chief and sign the contract.
And we will have a more formal swearing-in at the next council meeting on June 19th, where maybe somebody will want to take a picture, and I'm sure Shannon will want to be here. So, any other comments or questions from council?
Well, I would just like to say, from a council standpoint, yes, we've gone through some tough times, beginning and the end of last year. But as a council person, I have to commend the community. You folks did contact me with good and bad. But the thing I liked the most about it is that in the end, I think the community has come together. And we're going to move forward in all areas of policing. And I think in the end, we will become an example for small communities, that big communities will then look at to see how well community policing can be done. And for myself, this past week was, from a health standpoint, was very bad. But our police department were the first to be there to assist me and so forth, and I really thank them. And I think it's due a lot also to the change and thinking on how we can, as police officers, can better serve the community. So, thanks to you guys.
I'd just like to say that I was so impressed with all three candidates, and in particular at the candidates' meeting, I thought it was probably the best search process we'd ever had, just looking inside of what we already have. And while we hired Brian, Dave, and Tim, clearly have so much to offer this community. And I'm so glad that they're on our department, and really want to take advantage of their skills, as well as all the skills of the people in the police department.
Great. Yeah, I want to thank Brian for what he's done for our community since January 1, the healing that he's brought. And I think that he's been able to help the whole police department, it feels like is coming together. I think that's very important. We've had a history of division in our department, which has not been a healthy thing. And so, I'm very pleased, the leadership that Brian is showing, to really appreciate the police officers, have a really strong sense of what the community wants. And I think, you know, other police officers have, you know, know that as well, because they're part of our community as well, particularly Dave Meister. So, I'm feeling, you know, very encouraged that we can move forward, you know, building this progressive, compassionate department that provides the service to our community that we want. So, thanks to Brian and all the police department, Dave Meister, and Tim Spratlin as well.
Yeah, actually, I do want to say something. So, first of all, I want to underscore what Marian said, and Judith also alluded to. And I expect that Brian will be looking at ways to effectively utilize Dave and Tim, because they do have some amazing skills. And again, we were all really impressed with just who we have on our force and the expertise. But I also want to say, Brian, keep up the good work. Continue to be brave about being innovative, and as Judith said, progressive. And I think you know, but I want to again say that you have council and the village manager's full support. So, thank you.
Everybody else said it so well, there's no reason for me to repeat, but congratulations, Brian. We're lucky to have you on board, and your first week on duty, you've got a big event. So, I know you'll be busy Saturday, so...
What's going on?
Oh, yeah. Did we take a vote?
You have not.
We haven't taken a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One additional change I do want to make to the agenda, down under Old Business, we've got Proposed Medical Marijuana Facility Update. We're just going to move that up into the next piece of legislation, because it doesn't quite seem right to be passing a piece of legislation before we've had a discussion about the update. So, that's actually what we're going to do first. Judy's actually going to bring a presentation up. We'll actually be able to see some pictures. Just a brief review for folks that may not be aware, I guess it's been about a month ago now, we were contacted by a company by the name of Cresco, who is a company that has Cresco Labs, who have three medical marijuana facilities in Illinois, who actually happened to pass the law a little bit sooner than Ohio did. They established those three plants in Joliet, Illinois, Lincoln, and Kankakee. And so, we've gone, it was a very quick process. There's a little bit in this presentation talking about a timeline, but they have until, they are looking for a location for cultivation and processing facility. The way the state of Ohio has set up the laws, they are regulating it in stages. And they just introduced the regulations a few weeks ago, at about the time we were contacted, for the cultivation process, and the license, the process to go through to get a license. But those applications need to be in by June 30th, which means that they had a very short timeframe, and we have a very short window in which to respond, because they need to have a commitment, certainly prior to that June 30th date, because the state of Ohio is requiring that they have a site selected that has proper zoning, that they have control of, so that they would have title to if this deal goes through. So, it all has to move forward very quickly. Not comfortable for us on council necessarily, and certainly not comfortable for the community. We recognize that we're not a community that makes decisions quickly. And, you know, and we require, and this is something new. So, we recognize that this was going to require a great deal of deliberation. We've done, we've done a lot of it. We've done a lot of due diligence. The Cresco folks came to town last Monday and Tuesday. Chris Shrimf, who is the local rep from Columbus, is actually here tonight. We spent two days, they spent two days here, meeting with stakeholders, meeting, and there were stakeholder meetings all day Monday and half of the day Tuesday. And then we had a special meeting on Tuesday, and we were able to bring Charlie Bactell, who is the principal, and Chris, in to make a presentation to council and to the community that was there. We recognize it was very short notice, but it was as much as we could do. It was as quick as we could possibly respond. Since that time, there have been many more conversations between staff. Chris Conard, our legal counsel, has been in consultation with their legal counsel on Friday. Brian, Patty, Denise Swinger, our zoning and planning person, and myself went to Illinois and visited two of their factories. We were really pretty blown away by it. It was amazing facility, amazing people. I kind of want to just go through quickly. This is their presentation. I am not going to do their presentation. I left a few slides, and most of the slides, I want you to see, are slides that we added with local information. This is just showing the kind of projections of what they're expecting sales of medical marijuana to do over the next few years, basically showing that the existence of a robust market. Next, Judy. This shows the states that have passed either recreational and or medicinal marijuana laws. So, there's a lot of states in the middle that haven't, and it's pretty much as usual how things happen. The coasts tend to lead the way in these things. But Ohio was certainly not the first, and there are more states joining in. Next. This, these are pretty pictures. This is part of their, part of their presentation, kind of showing some of their product, product things, and how they package. I want to go on to show you more of their facility, so unfortunately, we're not seeing all of everything. So, the facility on top is their, is their Lincoln facility, which is closer to the kind of facility that will be, would be in Yellow Springs. If you, the building on the front is, with the brown roof, is the office and production area, which is, in this situation, it's a metal building like the rest of it, but it could be conventional construction. That's an L shape that is pretty standard, that contains their offices and also all of their lab and production facilities. The two buildings next to it, to the right, are what they call modern hybrid greenhouses. And there, I'll show you, we have the next slide. And down below, which the picture we can't see, one of their other facilities that we went to in Joliet is a tilt slab building, a concrete building. It is truly conventional construction there. You can see it. So, it's a little bit more conventional in terms of an office building. Judy, next. So, this is the inside of one of the hybrid greenhouses. You can see, this is essentially the exact footprint of, that we would be getting for taking, going through the cultivation process. And they, I think, are initially talking about doing two or three bays. They move the plants as the plants mature from one bay to the next. You can see, you can see a lot of light coming in through that, through that roof, through that greenhouse roof system. It's a translucent roof. You can't really see very well, but they're using these kind of state-of-the-art agriculture, agricultural racking systems, the way they water. They're actually watering directly into the plants, so there's very little waste. I don't think I saw any water on the floor anywhere. So, there isn't runoff, there isn't a lot of water. They aren't just, you know, blanket spraying anything. Very, they're very environmentally and resource-sensitive. Next one, Judy. So, how, Sophie, go back to the next one, go back to the last one. Okay, so, what this is showing is the roof structure. This is showing the curtain structure that crosses over to cover up, so you can go ahead and move forward. So, this shows that there, each one of those bays, those translucent bays on the roof, has one of these black curtains. That's the first one that closes, and the black on the right is actually what it looks like. That's the curtain closed fully. But then, once that curtain is closed, then the white curtain below it comes across and takes out all of the light, 100% of the light. takes out all of the light, 100% of the light. So the reason that this is important to us is because it reduces, there were concerns about light pollution at night. This will eliminate any concern about light pollution at night. Next. There's been a concern expressed about odor, an odor control, and this is part of the fan and exhaust and scrubbing system that they use to remove, to kind of capture and remove the odors. I will say that until we got in the facility, I didn't smell anything. And literally, the doors had to open before we could smell anything. I didn't personally smell anything till we actually got into production myself. So that really didn't seem to be an issue. Next, Judy. This is showing some of the cultivation. This actually happens to be Joliet, not Lincoln. This gentleman is amazing. He is, he knows agriculture, he knows biology, botany. He's hybrid, you know, they're creating hybrids. And the way, the process that they go through to cultivate and develop new species and new strains of cannabis is amazing. And they're going to the point where, where they're able to target particular strains to particular ailments and that the, that the healing properties, they're really targeting it on, on particular strains that work for particular issues. Next. This is showing a little bit more of the, of the techie part of it. This is, on the left, the picture is the extraction, where they're actually extracting the, what do they, extracting the oils from the plant. And then on the right is, it's part of the cooking process. This is just to kind of produce a wax. There are any number, and I'm not going to get into all of the different products that they use, but one of them is a wax and this oven helps to produce that wax. And, and this shows the, kind of the three brands that they have. Cresco, which is focused on THC-based products. Remedy, which is a little bit more related. It's, and what they-
CBD?
CBD is, is a different strain, a different part of the cannabis plant. And then Mindy's is their edibles. And they've actually hired a chef from Chicago to develop recipes to, for the candies and other edibles that they, that they produce.
And we tested some of the-
They were good.
-non-medicated ones. And they were excellent.
Right, they were. Yeah, CBD, which is something that, you know, in this education process that we've learned is, is very different from THC. It directly helps with pain, but it doesn't have, as they put it, the euphoric feeling. And so in sort of looking at their product lines, they think about, you know, who would be comfortable with using cannabis, who would not be comfortable with it, but would still get those benefits. So they have a variety of different products and as Karen said, that really target those different issues.
I'm not going to say much about this, but they're, but they're very big on, on education. So one of the things that they do is physician education because, I mean, in Ohio, we're going to have to go through a big educational process because it's going to be totally new to our physicians, it's going to be confusing, so they will go through an education process with physicians. It isn't prescribed. Ohio doesn't allow prescriptions. It's, you need to get a doctor's recommendation first. You get a, are they doing the cards? Chris, are they doing the cards?
Yes.
Okay. So, so patients need to go through a process through the state to get a card to allow them to purchase, but then they also have to go to a physician and a physician will recommend, will certify that they have whatever condition is required to receive, to be able to go purchase the cannabis. Next. I was really impressed, as somebody that's into marketing, I was, I was impressed with their, with their marketing approach. Very consumer-friendly. They, and I can't read the, what were the three?
Right, there was revive, remedy, and relax.
Relax, right.
Revive, fresh, relax. Correct.
So it's basically the three, the three different, the three different kinds of chemicals. How, how your body reacts to it and, and how exactly folks like to consume the cannabis kind of depends upon, they can go to one of those three products. Next. So this is kind of, and this, I did not realize how small these slides were. Now I understand when I, people put together PowerPoints that I can't read and I'm-
Well, this is, we did make this available on the website.
Right. This will be available tomorrow on the website. This kind of shows the numbers. So there's 11.6 million people in the state of Ohio. They're expecting about a thou, about 1% or 116,000 patients will be using cannabis by 2021. And based upon their, their market share in Illinois, which is actually quite high, their, their market share in Illinois is, I think, 15% or more.
22%.
22%. They're, they're, you know, being very conservative here in Ohio and they're, they're hoping that they'll get 8%. If they continue in Ohio as they've been doing in Illinois, I would expect it would be greater than that. Would you pull it up a little bit, Judy? Then on the bottom, again, you can't, you're not going to be able to read this, but this is showing a little bit of the timetable. I already said that, that their applications are due to the state on June 30th. They expect to hear whether they're successful by September or October of this year. As soon as they hear if they've received a license, they plan on breaking ground and starting construction. And then everything is supposed to be up and running by September of 2018. So people, by September 8th of 2018, patients should be able to go into a dispensary and actually purchase cannabis. Next. So this you're never going to be able to read. So I have our professional person here that is going to be able, our finance director, who's going to be able to kind of review these numbers. This is basically showing the local impact. So I've, we've got up there the, the local tax, income tax. So the number, the ways we have to benefit, I'll go through and then Melissa can get into the specifics. So we have an income tax impact, we have a property tax impact. Those are the direct financial. Cresco, as a, as a company, has pledged to a 2% profit sharing with the community. That could come either in the form of funds directly to a, to a community government or shared with nonprofits. How that happens, we're not sure. We don't know the legalities of how that can be distributed and whether it's something that the village can actually receive directly. But it's a commitment that Cresco has made to support our nonprofits. They've also pledged to work with, they've also pledged to work with, to allow their employees to work with local nonprofits 40 hours a week, or 40 hours in a quarter per employee. So that's incredibly generous. They've already started some other partnerships, which we'll talk about later. So Melissa, why don't you talk about the numbers?
So the first number is income tax potential. We had some estimations by Cresco. They gave us an estimation of an annual payroll of 2.5 million total. And at the Yellow Springs municipal income tax rate of 1.5%, the withholding portion would be approximately 37,500. There would be additional net profits that could be dispersed to the village depending on how the, the business does. And we don't have any kind of estimations with that. We just have the payroll withholding information. And then the second piece of that would be the property tax potential. The number that was used that would be invested, I think, was 6.3 million in the facility. That would not all be what the property is valued at. So I have two different scenarios here, just for comparison's sake. On the top is a $6 million property value and the bottom is a $4 million property value. In both cases, the top, the higher estimation, the village would receive approximately $23,000 worth of property taxes based on that $6 million valuation. And then on, based on that $4 million property value, the village as a municipality would receive 15,000 approximately. So this also gives the breakdown of what all of the other stakeholders would receive, including the county, the township, the schools.
Would you mention the schools?
Yeah, the schools, based on the $6 million property valuation, are about 94,000. And then based on the lower valuation at 4 million, would be approximately 63,000.
And we do expect that they'll probably, they're, they're still trying to decide if they're going to, chances are, they're not going to build out the full facility. They'll, they'll build it in such a way that they can add bays. But there's a minimum 25,000 square feet that they'll start out with. That's what's required of the, of the type one or-
Tier one.
Tier one licensee. So 25,000 square feet of cultivation space. They're looking at potentially about a 50,000 square foot facility. And they're looking at a total of, total investment of about, at the end, with equipment, with all of the consulting, all of the services, everything, all of the license fees, of somewhere in the range of $11 million that they're going to be making in Ohio in this facility.
And the infrastructure.
And the infrastructure, right. So, and I can't read what any of the, can you go on to the next one?
Indeed.
So they are about community. They're about community outreach and not only just with generosity, but they, they're already looking at community partnerships. They've already reached out to EnviroFlight and have taken some of EnviroFlight's fertilizer. They've already been talking to Community Solutions about doing some, taking, using their compost. So all of their waste that's, they compost and it can be used anywhere. And they're talking about utilizing that at Agraria. And there's also some soil amendment work that, and research that Agraria is doing that they're involved with. They also do research here in Illinois, or in Illinois, they're doing research with a lot of the universities. We have a medical school here in Fairborn. I can see some, some very good potential research being done there also. Is there another one?
Well, and I think what's amazing about this is they have started working with these organizations since they started talking to us. So within about a week, they followed up on these opportunities. We were blown away when we were there to see EnviroFlight's fertilizer in the factory and to hear, I mean, it was, it was pretty impressive.
Is there another one, Judy?
There's none.
That's it? Okay, so that's it. So there was a lot there. Chris, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Chris Shrimp.
Chris Shrimp, not you.
Clarification I have is on the property build-
Why don't you?
The property build out will be, that first, that first part will be $6 million and then by 2021, it will be more than $6 million if we hit the patient projections because we will build up and give rest of the, of the building with the revenue that's coming in.
So the initial investment itself is this?
Is 6 million. That only gets you to the 50,000 square foot. When we get to 100,000 square foot, the investment will be much larger.
Okay. So I assume we've got questions, council, questions?
I wondered if it's worth you letting the citizens know what we're voting on tonight in conjunction with this information also.
So Chris Conard, could you talk about that?
All right, so the process that we're going forward with is that there's, before council tonight, a resolution to discuss that would allow Patty to enter into an option agreement that has a contingency of Cresco being approved for the licenses that they are going to be applying for. If Cresco receives those licenses from the state, then council would be authorizing, what council's authorizing Patty to sign a purchase option agreement for the eight acres of land. Then depending on how this plays out, council will then need to move forward with an ordinance to approve the actual sale of the land. We had a conference call on Thursday morning. I received the draft of a purchase option agreement Saturday afternoon at 1:30. We're working through that document now and I expect it will be ready later this week.
Okay.
So I would want to add this one piece. Because of this timeline, it has been dictated by the state. And really, we're all at the mercy of what the state has done. It is possible that there may be a discussion of whether or not to add an agenda item to next council meeting on an order, potential ordinance to actually authorize the sale of the land if the contingency of obtaining licenses by Cresco were met. We don't know about that yet, but I just wanted to let council know and let the citizens know that may be something that will be, they'll see on the agenda. So don't be surprised.
Okay. And I do believe there is another trip planned for additional staff members?
On the 16th.
The 16th, that'll be Mary Ann, Jerry, are you? Mary Ann, Jerry, Johnny, Jason, not Jason, Johnny and Brad?
Not Brad either.
Okay. So, so there will be four more going out. It's a long day, I will tell you. It's a long day. 5:30 in the morning till 10:30 at night. So, but it's well worth it. So citizen questions, comments? Come on.
You must come for some reason.
Deborah McGee, resident. And I have a couple of concerns about it. You mentioned the EnviroFlight use of the fertilizer. In a general, is it organic? Would they be leaving a lot of chemicals on the land?
No. There, it's because of the fact that people are ingesting it. It's, they, what's the word, the term that they use?
Oh, the beneficial bugs?
Beneficial bugs. There, it's very low pest. There's a point at which, or very low fertilizer. I don't know if they use any fertilizer.
Right. So Illinois has incredibly restrictive laws or regulations about pesticides and Cresco has agreed to apply those same standards here. So basically, when it comes to, you know, anything that they put on the plants, it's before they flower and they use things like cinnamon oil. So we're talking about very minimal impact and almost no runoff because their system, they use, you know, the sort of drip watering so that they give the plants exactly how much water they'll absorb. So, and that is also, Charlie Bactel gave a pretty specific presentation about that at the last meeting, which we have videoed. But yeah, they've guaranteed that.
My other concern is about safety for the workers, potential robbery. Is this where they're going to have a lot of product that could be sold on the black market with this tax or police force? Is there a potential that? I'm sure Illinois dealt with that, but that-
Yeah, let's, let's, we'll take your question. We'll, I'll see if there's a lot. We'll definitely answer that one. Brian's already answered. We'll definitely answer that question. We'll see if other people-
But I want to say in general, I support the idea of medical marijuana because I think it's so great that people wouldn't be smoking it. It's really hard on the lungs and the heart. And also it wouldn't be as illegal that people would be using illegal means to get it now. So in general, I support the idea of medical marijuana.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Paul? You do.
Paul D. Laverne, I've been here for about 50 years. First, as a citizen, we've, I've heard pros and cons around town about this. We have to be very clear. This is not recreational marijuana in any form. No one's going to be stealing it, selling it on the black market. This is about a company that wants to come to our town, invest millions of dollars. They're going to pay for the road, they're going to pay for all the infrastructure, my understanding, and make it tapable to the other expansion of that property. Put a lot of money into the town, it will build. That's just, those little charts and graphs are beginning of billions and billions of And it's not illegal. Speaking as a potential patient, in 25 states, I would have a prescription from an ophthalmologist for innerocular pressure due to the rubber belts I have sewed around my eyes for 25 years. I'm blind totally in one eye and partially in the other. I don't have vitreous like the rest of you. They sucked it out and my eye's full of water from my body. So innerocular pressure, I barely am maintaining what I've got left. Smoking pot every day for 47 years has kept me from the glaucoma father had and my brother had. That's a genetic marker. And I talked to all of my ophthalmologists just like that. I'm a pothead. That's recreational. 25 years, it's been totally medical to keep me- 25 years, it's been totally medical to keep me, not totally, the relaxation. Honest. This is a no fault for this town. This town, now, do I agree with some of the people? Oh, I wish we could be like Colorado. I should be able to grow it freely in my backyard cheaply. But, this isn't the, what we've got in Ohio is this. And if we can get it here, it's a win-win. And a lot of people I know who are now holding off cancer, literally curing cancer. I've got a friend from Antioch that graduated in '80. She was on fourth stage, told her to go home and die. Beth Gladstein. Her last, she went off after chemo, after hair falling out, after all the drugs and trials, she went to using a little bit of oil every day. Her last two scans, zero. Tumors went away. She is now free. And they gave her fourth stage womanly go-home-and-die. And that's what happened. This is a woman I know. She went to school here. These are the people that deserve what we want. This isn't about the kids smoking dope at the high school or going to the woods. This is about being honest adults and looking at science and seeing that we have a way to break ice in this whole state and make some damn money that we need. We don't have Verna's anymore. We don't have anybody. Thank you, Cresco, coming here. And I think you ought to vote on it totally. It's not about recreation. It's about medicine for the masses. I'm all for these people.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else? Chrissy? Oh, Dorothy, Chrissy's, sorry.
I'm Chrissy Cruz, and I just want to say once again, thank you. I think this is an excellent idea, and I feel like this is a perfect fit for our community. One thing that really caught my attention in the news the last few years was reading about numerous people who had children who have seizures. And the only thing that controlled these children's seizures was CBD oil or THC oil. And it dramatically improved their life just by having this oil. There were children that were, I've read about children who had like 20 to 30 seizures a day. Their brains were literally being damaged. And they were taking all these pharmaceutical medications that were not controlling their seizures. And then they put them on this medicinal cannabis, and all of a sudden, they're not having seizures anymore, and they're able to live real lives again. And I'm really excited to see that Yellow Springs is going to be part of that. First of all, like I said a couple of years back in council meeting, with the reputation Yellow Springs has, it would be almost an embarrassment if we weren't one of the first places to jump on this bandwagon. And so, I also want to commend council, because I know that you've taken some slack from people about saying that you're rushing in too quickly. I don't think so. I think time's of the essence, and I appreciate that you jumped on this opportunity and that you're bringing this forward into our community and making it happen. I think it's going to be a great thing, and thank you.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Thanks.
Dorothy?
Hi, my name is Dorothy Buke. I just wanted to point out that we don't mind taking more tax income from you guys. My question is more about the CBE land. This week, there's been lots of discussions about building a new high school, and I was wondering if having Cresco on that land would disqualify the school district from looking at AUM as a potential.
So what?
For school.
Oh, we're waiting to answer that? Okay.
Yeah, we'll.
We'll answer it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I see all the many advantages of this company moving to Yellow Springs, and it is very exciting. And I see it could be very, very good for this community. I'm just wondering if they have some kind of a stand on full legalization of marijuana. And I wonder if they project full legalization as being a disadvantage to their business, or if they see it as being an advantage to their business. I feel that if they feel, it may be hard to get a candid statement from this company about how they view that, but I think it would be a shame for this community if we supported a company that was against fully legalization, for the reason being, as they feel that they would lose market share. It would be, we would be in conflict, I believe, if that was so. Yeah, I just wonder what their stand is. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
And your name, please.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Christine Roberts. And thank you very much, council. I applaud your work on this. Thanks. Anyone else? So I'll take a couple, I'm going to actually ask chief to deal with a safety question. One of the stakeholder groups that we did, we met with chief, Green County Sheriff Gene Fisher and the major from the Green County Sheriff's Department. So, they were apprised, we did have input from law enforcement. Chief, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
I'm Jay.
You're still going to have to come up, sorry.
I can just say, Gene Fisher, we were, we were all impressed with the level of security that the facility offers. It's a very tight professional operation, from light control, the odor emissions with charcoal or carbon filtration, to the security systems in place. The employees are in different color uniforms, there's different clearance levels. Speaking as someone who's worked on the Air Force Base for years, it was bar none as secure as any place I've been. So we were real impressed with that, and Gene had no questions himself.
Thank you.
And we saw it firsthand.
Right.
So, they have three plants in Illinois. I think some people heard that they got, they applied for three licenses and were first, second, third. So, they built all three plants. And so, they have not had any issues with robbery or any other crime issues since they've started their operations. And, what did they call the doors?
Well, they call them man traps, people traps.
There you go. I know, yeah, I didn't want to say. But, you cannot get through one door until another door has been closed. So, you know, they've got cameras everywhere, running nonstop.
And they bring the truck in, so, so it, they have a van, unmarked van, that material goes off and the completed, the completed product leaves. It comes into the locked facility. So it comes in the garage door, they lock the garage door. The person who's driving the van can't get into the safes where the, where the cannabis is held. It's not until it gets to the dispensary that somebody gets a code that they can then enter in to get the product. So, they really, they really, you know, create a safe environment. And, and they are very anxious, you know, to work with us to soften, I mean, there's going, there is a security fence, but they're, they're more than willing to work with us to soften the appearance of that, to make it look less obtrusive. Where it is looking to be sighted at the CBE is in the far back corner, so it's very, it's really barely going to be visible anyway. So, I think we can, with, with some plantings, and they don't want to be, they don't want to be advertising themselves to the public either.
We also met with an elected official at the plant in Lincoln, and he highlighted, and this was the five-county intergovernmental agreement, and he highlighted, again, not only safe, but that they require the feed for the cameras to go to the state police office, and Cresco will accommodate that. So again, I think that meeting with Brian and the sheriff's office was, was really important. I can answer Dorothy's question. So, the way the law reads is that you have to put one of these facilities 500 feet away from a church, a K-12 school, a public park. However, once the plant is established, they grandfather in any new organizations of that sort. So, if the Cresco plant was built, after that, a K-12 school could move into AUM, or it could become a church or whatever. So, that's how the law's set up in Ohio.
And I do want to say that, that we've, we've met and talked with, with school officials, and there's a lot of support there. They see, they hear the numbers, they, they had already done their, run their own numbers, and when they see that kind of number coming to the schools, recognizing that that's money that's going to, that they're not going to have to come back and ask the community for, they're very supportive of that. Let's see, I'm going to, I was actually going to make a comment about the medicinal quality of the product and, you know, kind of following up on what Paul said, that this isn't recreational. This is medicinal marijuana. I'm actually going to ask Chris if he wants to comment on the legalization piece, but this is my impression from what I saw, is that these folks are creating the gold standard for medicinal marijuana. They're creating strains that are for particular afflictions. It's not buying pot and smoking a joint. It's not recreational. So, I think that they're creating a product for which there will continue to be a market, even if marijuana is legalized for recreational use. Chris, do you want to take that further?
I don't know, I think that's correct. We're a medicinal cannabis company. The recreational side is not something that we have really considered. What we're doing is we're approaching the state as, as the law is now. And I would say if you, if you were interested in recreational in the future, the best thing for you would be an aggressive medical program that works in the lab.
Karen, do you want to just review the infrastructure, the question of who's paying for the infrastructure, just to?
Patty, I'm going to turn that over to Patty.
Cresco has committed to paying for the infrastructure. However, I have been in contact with the Ohio Department of Transportation, and because they do have grant money for roads that lead directly to job creation, so we may be able to get some grant money from ODOT. They also steered me to a similar pot of money with the Dayton Development Coalition, so we may be able to come up with some grant funding as a village to go towards the road. But Cresco has committed to paying for the infrastructure.
Any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to comment, we've gotten a couple of comments from citizens that this is something citizens should vote on because it's, you know, the village, the community owns the land. And I just want to respond to that. I mean, I don't agree with it. I think that, that we're, we're elected to make these kind of decisions. Now, there's times when citizens take it into their own hands, and they have a referendum, and they decide. But clearly, in this instance, if we would decide we were going to have the citizens decide, we've just decided not to do this because there is not time. You know, one of the negative sides of how quickly this has to be decided is that we don't have that much time, and we don't get to decide, we're going to take more time because that's, that's not an option. So, and I'm, I very much support this, going forward with this.
So, seeing and hearing no comments?
If there was one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
I do have a question.
Can you come up?
I'm just curious.
State your name, please.
Marie Miller. I do have a question. Do you actually go into schools and educate down on your facility at all, or provide any kind of counseling or drug counseling to students?
So that's part of the conversation we have with the community, and we've talked to the school board twice now, we had our second call with them today, and if that is something they would want from us, we'd absolutely do it. If they want us to not be visible, we would, you know, tap up to what goes for work and what the community.
Have you done anything in other states?
We have not, I mean, we, our facilities in Illinois, as the council protests to, are pretty, you know, pretty far out there, that are not really near any schools or, you know, in a densely populated area like Yellow Springs.
I think what I would say is that, is that this is going to be a new experience for Cresco. There, I, the impression I have of their facilities in Illinois is that the communities welcome them, they're, they're partners in the community, but it's kind of out of sight, out of mind. The communities are happy with the revenue, but they don't necessarily see a partnership. We are already seeing the potential for partnerships. I mean, the community is already embracing this. The fact that they're talking to Community Solutions, they're talking to EnviroFlight, they're putting forth the community partnerships, we're embracing that instead of being embarrassed by it or wanting, you know, wanting a hands-off approach. So, I'm already excited by the opportunities. We did talk earlier, council about, I talked with a couple of council members about the possibility of, of maybe doing some enhanced education, drug education. I know that that's something that, that Cresco would support. They are, they're willing to put together a group to, to, to talk about drug, drug addiction. And, you know, not that this medical marijuana has anything to do with drug addiction, but if there's any concern about mixed messaging, we want to make sure the students are getting the right message. So, that's definitely something that, that we're thinking about, and I know the schools will think about. And we also talked to the Educational Service Center about it, and they're also interested in that, too. So, we're ready to take a vote?
I would just read it first. Just saying.
Say what?
We have to read it first.
We haven't read it. Oh, that's right. Yes, please.
I sent out a email to random, about 250 people, a pretty diverse group, I think. And I've now heard from probably about 90 people. And, so this is just sort of, in a way, sort of a straw vote. 70, 75% of the people supported this. I think there were three or four people that didn't. And those who didn't say yea or nay had a number of questions, which I tallied up, and we've been working on getting the answers to them. So, my sense is that there's pretty strong support in the community for it. And one of the brands that Yellow Springs is in the process of taking on, or has taken on, I think, is being a health and wellness community. And I can see a way that this facility fits into that. There are going to be things that come out of having this here, assuming we do, that will benefit us. And there are some things that we don't know what the result will be. But I think that we have the capacity to address any concerns that we have. And the concern about drug education is something that I started thinking about when I had a conversation last evening with some people. And after we left the Drug Task Force, we didn't really have any kind of program on drug education. And so, I think this is a good opportunity. We will be getting some additional income, one way or another. And I think that as a, as a complement to this facility, I would like to see us establish a really premium drug education, drug abuse program that can go into the schools and be available for the citizens. Because clearly, drug abuse, and I'm not saying it's not about medical marijuana, frequently, in fact, medical marijuana is used to support people who are trying to get off of abusive drugs. But still, drug abuse is a critical issue, and if we can get funded some kind of program that can really impact especially young people, I think that would be really cool.
Great. So I just realized, I've just been talking, and we haven't, we really don't have the resolution before us. So, Judy, would you read Resolution 2017-27, and by title only?
Sure. This is authorizing the village manager to enter into an option agreement for the sale of eight acres of real estate.
Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, so we've just kind of exhausted the talk about this. The one last thing I want to say, Mary Ann talked about the wellness piece of the community. I just see this fitting into so many of our wheelhouses. It's, you know, I always envisioned some kind of an agricultural, agriculturally-based facility right there around, next to the property, that we want to remain as agriculture and that we hope through protection will stay as agriculture. So I can't think of anything better. Maybe we'll even get a special edible out of it, too. Maybe we'll get, you know, our own Yellow Springs edible, who knows? So, we've got the food, we've got the, we've got the wellness, and we've got the, and we've got the manufacturing. And these guys are really, like I said, very cutting-edge. So, any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And last, we have, and how did I lose my agenda? What's the next one? Appointing the zoning of 2017-28, would you read that? By title only?
Um, it's appointing the zoning administrator to the Architectural Review Committee. Can I get a motion, please?
So move. Second.
Patty, you have to explain this one.
The covenants on the property formerly known as the CBE have a provision for an Architectural Review Committee. That committee is made up of, I believe, and Chris, you've worked on this probably a little more than I have. a little more than I have, is made up of property owners and someone appointed by the village. And in this instance, we choose to appoint Denise Swinger, who is our Planning and Zoning Inspector, to be a member of the Architectural Review Committee for anything that's developed on that property. It makes sense because she has to review it anyway, she has to have a detailed review, a site plan review. It simply makes sense to allow her to also serve as our person, our representative on the Architectural Review Committee. Chris is...
The board is made up of one person pursuant to the covenant right now.
Pursuant to the covenant right now? Okay, because I know that did change.
Well, because we own all that at hand.
Okay. Right, it had been a combination of property owners, wasn't that the way it was originally?
Well, it's intended. The Architectural Review Committee was intended to be made up of the various property owners. Since the land hasn't been developed, the village now acquired title of the property, it would be one member to the Architectural Review Committee. And given the development, it would make sense to have that person be the zoning administrator.
Not AUM?
Pardon me?
Not AUM?
If there's an objection.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah. How much power does this person have? I mean, can they say yea or nay at whim or what?
Chris, would you? I'm kind of...
While you're up there, is there such a committee?
Yes, it exists.
This is specifically for the CVE? This is specifically for the CVE?
No, I know.
Oh, okay.
There was, and the, under the original covenants, Ted Donnell was the sole member of the Architectural Review Committee. He resigned that position.
Who was it?
Ted Donnell.
Oh, okay.
He resigned that back in 11, 12, I think, maybe it was 14.
Well, it was longer ago than that. We just took care of it with the legislation then.
So because...
So it's just one person, you said?
According to the covenants, it can be one person, yes. And, again, because the, there was a belief that the property would be developed more quickly than it was. And so there was never a reason for the, for an architectural review to be done because there was never anything to review.
And I think that...
So this appointment is to comply with the conditions that exist within the covenants.
And I think the urgency is related to the Cresco facility, right? Because we have a zoning review pending. Council may choose to approach it a different way after this goes through, if, I would say. So the urgency is to take care of the zoning requirement that's out there now.
And in response to what power? I mean, this is sort of review and recommend, or?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to think of it functionally, the entity, we'll say in this case it would be Cresco, would come forward with their site plan essentially. There would be some other information required, but it's, in essence, what would, the same information that would be presented to the Planning Commission. And so there's a logic by having the zoning administrator perform that function because it will, I don't want to say it will streamline the process, although that might be the net effect, simply that person's qualified and has the expertise and the knowledge to perform the function of what the committee needs to have done.
But what is that? What is the function?
Well, it's set forth in the covenants.
Well, my question is, does that one person have the power to say, oh, I don't like that design? Or is it just they make suggestions or they have standards by which it has to comply?
The covenants set forth standards, I believe, in Section 4.1 of the covenants.
And so that administrator looks to make sure the standards are compliant?
Correct. I would say this, that the standards can't be just interpreted in an arbitrary and unreasonable manner, particularly since it's village and public-owned property.
Just to clarify, because it seems like there might be some confusion, it doesn't eliminate the fullness of the process. The Architectural Review Committee precedes the BZA or the Planning Commission process. So that individual assures that the correct information is then going to be presented to that body, which is the intelligence of putting Denise in that position, since she serves on both of those bodies, she can assure the correct information is going to those bodies for their final decision.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, council, citizens? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now is the time in the agenda where we hear from citizens about items that are not on the agenda. We asked that you come, excuse me.
Aren't you going to do staff reports?
I thought we did, I thought you said after citizens' concerns.
No, no, she said after resolutions.
After.
Oh, geez, okay. So, staff reports. Patty?
I am looking.
Did you vote for the resolution?
Yeah, we just did, like, whoa, Chris.
So obviously, the permanent chief position has been announced. The gaunt hard pool is open. Pool passes are available only at the pool between 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM daily. Swimming for all passes must still be obtained through Ruth Ann Lilick at the village offices during normal business hours. And there is a clarification in there about something that came up at a previous meeting. A citizen noted that I had made a statement that had it not been for the hotel construction, the village would not have installed the infrastructure on Limestone Street in 2014. And while it is true that I did respond in that way when asked the question, would we have installed the infrastructure if it were not for the hotel? It should also be noted that, number one, it was done for economic reasons to assist in the development of the hotel. And also that there were residents on Limestone who did benefit from the installation of the stormwater and the sanitary sewer, even though it was not initiated specifically for that purpose. So, and at the end of the day, I believe the new roof drainage from the library was also put into that stormwater drain. So I just wanted to clarify what had been said earlier as to what the content of the discussion was.
Okay. Thank you. Melissa?
Okay, so there's a lot of stuff going on in finance and utilities. The Utilities Office, the clerks are being trained on the new utility billing software until Wednesday. The company CMI came out and started today. I know that Nathan Lee, who is the lead billing clerk, she's really excited about the capabilities. It's just going to have a lot more reporting functionality for citizens and businesses that we didn't have before and we're really excited about it. So we don't have a date that we will be going live with that yet. We're still in the early stages of the conversion process, but they are training on that this week. The auditors were here and they have completed the bulk of their onsite work. They were pretty happy with everything so far. So we are hoping to have our audit released by the end of June for 2016. And also attached to this report, there are two things, the first that we'll discuss now and the second one later. The first is the summer sewer ordinance. We had spoken about this at the last council meeting. There was supposed to be legislation, but we did not bring legislation tonight because we found a little bit of an interesting situation as it pertained to ordinances as they related to summer sewer. So I gave a history in my report. And basically what happened was I was asking Judy if she could get me the word version of the original legislation that was passed in 2014 that currently makes up our summer sewer adjustment program that we currently use. And when she was looking, she found an ordinance from 2011 that was never repealed or replaced. And that ordinance in 2011 was as a result of some research that council had tasked then-village manager Mark Kundif to do. And he provided council with four options to address this exact same issue of what to do with water that isn't entering the sewer system and how do you rectify that with our customers. And there, what happened was in June of 2011, ordinance 201116 was passed, which requires sewer adjustment meters to be installed. So basically, a customer who would like to have their sewer adjusted off of their bill would have that water metered and they would not pay for the sewer charges. I know that we have a couple of larger scale users that have irrigation meters, this is very similar to that. It's a very precise method of measuring water by metering it and therefore not charging the sewer. Our current method of doing this, which is an ordinance that was passed in 2014, which I've found some issues with that I wanted to try to correct with the ordinance that I was going to bring tonight. Basically, it's purely estimation. We look at what's used in the summer, we purely compare it against what's used in the winter, and any difference is automatically adjusted off to those customers that apply. So I was going to be bringing legislation that was going to essentially address some of the issues that I was having that needed some clarification with that 2014 ordinance. And we found a 2011 ordinance. The 2011 ordinance was never codified, so if, unless you knew that it was there, you wouldn't know it was there.
So just to clarify that, passed but not codified, what does that mean exactly?
Basically, if you look at our ordinances online, those are our codified ordinances. And that's the reference in which we all use on a daily basis to try to figure out, you know, what the regulations are within the village, what ordinances exist out there that help us do our jobs on a daily basis. So this whole notion of what to do with water that doesn't enter the sewer system was talked about by council, a solution was selected, and the ordinance was created, but it was never integrated with our other ordinances that we have. I think that it was, it was creating a Section H of our ordinances. And then we found that there was a totally different Section H, which had to do with a really old bond for upgrading the wastewater treatment plant. So it was, it was purely an oversight.
Okay. But since the 2014 piece was passed, I mean, that would supersede that, right?
It was creating a new Section G.
Oh, okay.
So we have a G that addresses the issue one way and we have an H that addresses it another way. So basically, what I need from council is to determine which one of these you want to go with because regardless, this will have to be fixed because one of them will have to be repealed and the other one will have to be codified with whatever changes we would need to make.
Well, my recollection is that the community was not happy with the 2011 ordinance because it was, and I think, I think it also, I think it just, it just was looked upon as being difficult to implement, expensive, and more complicated than perhaps this issue needed to be. Which is why, I'm pretty sure, Judith, can you remember these conversations, these discussions?
Thankfully.
And I'm pretty sure that that's why Laura came across, that's why Laura came up with this alternative suggestion, is because it was felt that the 2011 resolution was just not, it was overkill. And I understand from the Finance Director and from the, from our utility guys, why you're not, why that's what you want. But I think it becomes a community discussion. Let's just say it's become more complicated now. For me, as a council member, it's not as simple as taking and kind of qualifying the, and changing and restricting the ordinance that we thought we had. It's going to require a more complicated discussion. I don't know how you both feel about, how you all feel about it, but...
Well, I mean, on the face of it, I guess if people are going to try and say that they shouldn't have to pay the sewer tax because they're not using the sewer for gardening, then I'm okay with them having to put in, I mean, I don't know how expensive or how much work it is, but they're asking for something different from us. So I don't have a problem asking for something from them.
How much would it be to install one of these meters?
Low end, probably a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, they're not going to pay that back.
You're adding another water meter.
Yeah, I mean...
Strictly for garden use.
At the time, there was an extremely strong will on the part of council to not in any way subsidize anything that would appear to be encouraging any kind of overuse of watering, even to the extent of watering one's lawn. That was the discussion that was taking place at the time. Clearly, the will of council can change, but that's how that was in 2011.
Well, it was also certainly not to fill swimming pools, not to fill ponds, not to, not to fill hot tubs. It was for gardens, not, again, not lawns, but gardens. And I think, you know, the proposal that you had presented before of limiting it to a certain amount annually, that, that seems to be where I would be comfortable going. I, you know, if we're going to do it at all, I don't think we can do something that requires a citizen to pay a thousand dollars, that it's going to take them years to recoup that amount of money.
I'm with you on that.
If it were...
If we want to put a cap on it, that makes sense to me, but, but yeah, I think trying to keep it as simple as possible, maybe with that cap.
And at the last meeting, you know, I had presented the changes that I wanted to make that would make the 2014 ordinance work. And just in simply trying to find the word format of that ordinance, it was discovered that there was this other one that was conflicting, so...
Have we had people who do extensive gardening have come to us? I mean, do we have any people in this room who want to speak to this?
Macy. Macy, do you want to speak to it?
Oh, I don't need one. I use my radio.
Oh, does any, well, Anna, what about Anna?
Macy Reynolds. We do use, Dan Beverley takes that option because we fill the tank, the water tank for all the trees in town. Because there's, it's the easiest thing to do, rather than trying to use, I don't know whether, you've ever tried some of the public places where, well, I guess they're the village places where you can get water, but you have to use keys and they don't work right. And so it's just easier to fill it at Dan's house. So we do use a lot of water in the summertime that way. And we, and he takes it off his water bill.
Can they, can you use Fire Hydrant or the Firehouse?
Yep, we can, but hooking it up is more than any of us are really able to do.
No, Johnny says no.
No spread ground water in town.
Okay, okay. If there is an easier way for that to happen, I mean, I would, I would, yeah, okay, that's an issue. Anybody else? I mean, I really didn't want to get into this. We've got a lot on the agenda and this wasn't really intended to be a big agenda item. So let's, let's just...
Why don't we just put it onto the agenda?
Yeah, we need to put it onto a future agenda, but, but I, I think, Melissa, you're going to have to be thinking back the way we were thinking in the first place.
Okay.
And you can hold, I know you've got something there on lodging tax, but you can hold back to the next...
Yes, so that's it for me.
Okay. Chiefs?
So the police update. On Wednesday, May 31st, the department participated in the senior center flash mob dance. Apparently, the interim police chief's dance moves that day were said to be transcendent. Actually, I, I'm happy I didn't step on anyone and I don't believe anyone was injured. We had to cancel our second eight-hour session on de-escalation. Our trainer unfortunately was in an auto accident. He's, he's doing fine, but we did cancel that. The department is pleased to announce our newest dispatchers, Dawn Ward and Jillian Douglas, have both completed the required field training for the position of police dispatcher. And they're cut loose and on their own now. Both of them are very professional and they've done this for a long time, but we do have Dawn and Jillian that will be answering the phone. I wanted to express, Brian had mentioned something that just went out today. I received an email from someone and I just want to give you a quick synopsis, not using any names or anything, but this person had an incident where they had too much to drink one night and they retired to their vehicle only to fall asleep in the car with the lights on and a blinker turned on. And a concerned citizen called us. And the person who ended up receiving a citation in mayor's court for physical control because they were in the vehicle with the keys within reach, again, sent to mayor's court. He was very gracious and sent the department... He was very gracious and sent the department a wonderful letter, and I want to quote part of it that states, "I want to specifically thank Officer Beam and Officer England for keeping me and the community safe that night. I felt their professionalism went above and beyond what was required of them, given the situation." And so that made me feel great, because we were very lucky to have Jeff Beam and Mariah England on the department, and we've had similar situations before that hadn't turned out that way. So I wanted to share that with you. Happy to answer any questions you have, it's kind of a short report this week, but...
Nothing much has happened with you.
No, it's been pretty quiet.
Thanks. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
So I appreciate this.
Judy.
Judy. Judy. All right, so this is a notation for the record, that there was an insubstantial error found in Resolution 2017-25 after its passage on May 15th. Because the correction of the error doesn't affect any aspect of the legislation, it has been clerically corrected. The correction is to the first whereas and is as follows. Whereas the legislature of the state of Ohio approved the cultivation, processing, and dispensing of marijuana, et cetera. So the word legislature is replacing the word voters, that is the correction, and it can be clerically done, it has been clerically done, and now it's been noted for the record. Gaunt Park Pool's open, as you note, and it is completely awesome, please do get your pool pass. That's about it.
Thank you. Moving on to...
I apologize, I forgot to impart some good news of my own. Once I saw Brad's report in the packet, it reminded me. We have had some really intense studying going on in our water and wastewater treatment departments. Richard Stockton has passed his wastewater two license, the licenses are one, two, and three, and Richard has passed his wastewater two license with the highest score in the state.
Wow.
Which is saying something, because that is a very difficult test, it's a lot of math and a lot of chemistry, and that takes a lot of studying, and congratulations to Richard. In addition to that, Brad Alt, who is our water treatment and wastewater treatment superintendent, has passed his water two license, so he now has a water class two license, and while he said, "I didn't get the highest grade in the state, but I did pretty well." So congratulations to Brad as well.
That's great. Okay, I'm so confused on this agenda. I guess we do have citizens' concerns now, so that's for any item that is not on the agenda. We ask that you come to the podium, three minutes, and state your name. Anybody here? Okay.
I have my name.
Oh, sorry, okay, Chrissy, and then Amy.
Chrissy Cruz, and this kind of relates back to the medicinal marijuana facility. When I brought this up to council a couple of years back, one thing I talked about was that we set aside an acre of that land for a dog park, and I know that there was a lot of motion forward for a dog park in Yellow Springs some time ago, and nobody could find a good place for it, but I still would advocate that maybe we could get one of those committees together again, and look at even maybe the village donating an acre of land for a dog park, and then we could actually have what I actually dreamed for that property, we have the medical marijuana facility.
Puppies and paws.
Hot plants and puppy dogs. I mean, I just can't imagine a better way to come into Yellow Springs, and I think there would be a lot of people that would be interested in working on that, because I've heard so many people say that we really do need a dog park in Yellow Springs, and so I just wanted to bring that up. Can we start looking at that as well?
Thanks, Chrissy. Amy?
Thanks so much. I'm not actually sure if this is the place in the agenda, Mary Ann, since you brought it up earlier, but I wanted to just address the idea of the village of Yellow Springs lending its support to the 211 mayors across the country who have come out following the president's withdrawal from the Paris Climate Agreements, to commit themselves and their cities and the citizens they represent to uphold the goals and the ideals of the Paris Climate Agreement.
Yeah, we're, I think, we'll talk about that briefly. Thanks.
Thank you.
On to, oh, I'm sorry, Dorothy.
It's okay. I know, I'm invisible.
No, you're not.
So Dorothy Bouquet, I know I brought it up to Brian, and we talked about it with Susan, and I was wondering if the council and the manager would be in favor of streaming those council meetings on Facebook, on a free internet platform, so that residents like me who don't have a subscription to a cable network could be able to watch it from the comfort of their home? And I know that Susan mentioned that Channel 5 was heading that way, but in several years, because of budget. It would still really not apply to residents like me who don't have a subscription to a cable network, you know, and if we think about affordability, it would be nice to see those council meetings being streamed online on a free platform.
That's it. Thanks, Dorothy. I think somebody's maybe looking into it, but, I mean, it's probably not that easy. I know, without you doing your play-by-play, I don't know what, in a couple, in a few weeks...
And Susan, right now, when do we usually have meetings on YouTube? How soon after?
I try to get it on within 48 hours of them.
Okay. And so we have a YouTube channel, it's called the Community Access.
Community Access, Yellow Springs.
Right. And that can also be accessed through YSO.com, our website, where it says, "Watch Council Meetings."
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving on to old business, I thought we could briefly, I don't really have much to talk about with this letter to the township and school board, it's not really a letter, it's just a proposal. I asked Judy to do a little bit of research as to the last time we all got together, and it was a long time ago. And I spoke briefly with Lamar Spraklin, who's the president of the township trustees, and he was all for it, just wanted to know, you know, what would be on the agenda. I have actually not had an opportunity to speak with Aida, who's the president of the school board, but I did talk with Mario, and he certainly thought that everybody would be amenable. Potential discussion items were down at the bottom, so I thought that, you know, I know that it had been kind of presented as a, and discussed as, and I think it actually made it into the paper, discussed as a summit on affordability. I'm not sure anybody's quite up for that. That's a big undertaking, so I would, I guess I would support, definitely support the meeting. I don't know that I would want it strictly about affordability. I think that there are probably other things that we could talk about, just to get up to speed with each other on things that are happening, and the projects and things that are going on with each entity, and then the community's strengths and opportunities. Clearly, finances and affordability is within that particular discussion point. So I, you know, I haven't drafted a letter, I don't know that a letter is necessarily, you know, I probably would draft a letter with whatever discussion items. I think finding the meeting time is going to be a challenge, to get that many people together, and I even wonder if we should even try for the summer, if we should just wait till fall potentially.
Waiting till the fall's fine with me. I think this was an idea I had brought back way back in January, in terms of goals, and the main thrust, and I do agree that it's a difficult one, is around the issue of affordability. To me, that's, it's a hard, you know, in other states and other places, you know, schools are often under the same body of decision-making body as, you know, other, you know, so they're, instead of having a separate school board, separate council, you know, a lot of times these responsibilities are under one body, and it's a little complicated, I can feel that, for us to have that discussion, but I feel like it's something, as elected officials, that we have a responsibility to our community to get together and talk about. How we do it in a way that's productive, I'm not sure, so maybe thinking about in the fall, towards the fall, but I do think it is a key issue for our community, and it's not going to go away, and if we don't address it, if we just sort of go do our own things as separate bodies, we're never going to, I think, meet the responsibilities we have to our citizens. So I guess, you know, I don't know how to go forward.
But I do think...
I don't know that we should just, as, you know, the council, you know, maybe propose it, maybe we need, you know, should have some private conversation in thinking about how to go forward with that, but I do think we need, that that's where the discussion needs to be.
Well, but the schools, in deference to the schools, the schools have proposed a plan for what they're planning, and they're working through the community, through community conversations, I think that they've slowed that down a little bit, but they do have a timetable towards potentially putting a levy on the ballot in November, and I, this is probably creating a difficult, and they're having this discussion, I mean, they're essentially being inundated with this discussion of affordability, and I think that, I don't know, I guess I'm feeling like, I don't know that it's our place to suddenly jump on what their plans are, and what their aspirations are for the school system. That's kind of between them and the community, I feel.
Well, I agree with Judith. I thought that the main reason for this meeting was affordability. The other things that you have mentioned, the housing needs assessment, economic development, issues that we may not know about, I think all of those are important. I mean, I think it's critical that we are knowing what every body is thinking of doing, and to the degree possible, coordinate those things. And by listing affordability as an important issue, doesn't, we're not targeting the schools, I mean, the village council, we're involved in this too.
Then why don't, I think maybe I'll ask Judith or Mary Ann to do the planning, rather than me.
Okay.
Shall we?
Sure.
So, and one thing that I think we should talk about is how we can stay in communication.
It is frustrating, because I have brought up, in the past, we have had an agenda item of meeting with the trustees and the school board, it never seems to happen, it gets pushed aside, and it's only when there seems to be a desire on the part of council to influence what the other bodies are doing, that it seems to become important. So I, I'm more than willing to participate, but I'm not interested in planning it. So let's move on to the CBE conversation. Actually, let's do the Tree City, that was already on the agenda, we'll do the Tree City designation update. Patty?
During a previous meeting, council discussed the possibility of becoming a Tree City USA and asked for further information. I provided that, we had a discussion at the last meeting, and council asked me to submit an application to become a Tree City. I've not yet done that, it is on the list of the very long list of things on my desk to do, but I have been tied up with other things. I believe that there were some folks who maybe wanted a little bit more discussion about it, and I think that's why we're revisiting it tonight.
So I know that there are members of the Tree Committee here. Anna, Macy, does somebody want to speak to this?
I'm Anna Belisari, the president of the Tree Committee. I didn't realize that you had already gone so far as to decide to apply, but I'm sure that you are then aware of the standards that are required for admission to the Tree City USA program, of which I see two of them that might be some, take some work and be some, a little bit difficult, that first of all, we don't have a tree care ordinance, a very well-developed one here, and that's a big job to develop one of those, although there are guidelines for that, and there's help for that, and Wendy Van Buren and I know would help, and I know that the Tree City USA program does. And the other thing is that there has to be a community forestry program. We on the Tree Committee, we plant trees. We plant about 50 trees every year, most of them are tribute trees that people have requested us to plant to honor someone or to memorialize someone. Many of them are also replacement trees for trees that have been killed in one way or another. We've had all kinds of things killing trees in this town, including vehicular accidents and emerald ash borers and so forth and so on, more damage to trees, et cetera. So about a quarter of the trees we planted this year, we were counting as replacement trees, just simply to replace trees that we'd already planted once before. So we do need to have a little bit more attention paid to the care of trees after they're planted. We on the Tree Committee care for trees for three years after we plant them, but after that time, they are the responsibility of the village administration, and I'm not sure that there's even a line in the budget for that kind of work, and it's not cheap. It takes, it takes quite a bit of capital. The Arbor Day observance we do ourselves, although it's a very small thing, but it should be enlarged to include the entire village. What we usually do is plant trees at the Mills Lawn School, and have a little program for the students with the help of the Tecumseh Land Trust. So you've apparently already decided to do this, which is fine, I'd be curious to know what you, what the value is for the village for doing this, and I'm sure the Tree Commission, Tree Committee, I'm sorry, the Tree Committee would be willing to cooperate and help with whatever you plan to do, but I'd like to know what is in it for you to do this.
We didn't actually make a decision to do this yet, that's what we're considering, correct? I wasn't at a meeting, we were thinking about it. I was instructed to go ahead and submit the application, I just haven't done it yet. And originally, I brought it because council had talked about it a little bit and asked me to bring the standards and... Well, my understanding is it was kind of a simple process of just, but if it's more complicated, I'm thinking maybe we should hold out, but the reason that the whole thing came up was the Energy Board, I brought to the Energy Board the idea of having tree planting as part of, the Energy Board could work with the Tree Committee, because it keeps things cooler to have more trees.
Yeah. You did talk to me about that, I remember that.
Yeah, yeah. And if we're going to do it, and you said to me, you know, you got to order the trees in the fall, and we wanted, we were thinking about through the schools and maybe through other entities, you know, really becoming a yearly event of planting, not just trees on the street, but people could plant them in their yards, you know, provide shade for their homes, that sort of thing. So, but, you know, this, being a, you know, Tree City, you know, and meeting the standards, it sounds kind of more complicated than I had understood, and if it's more complicated, I don't know that we should get stuck on that right now, we might want to just decide, because the village had talked about we would put a little money towards buying the trees, you know, we would put, you know, so, and then the Energy Board could do some educating about the cooling effects of trees, and so when people think about cutting down trees around their homes, I'll see these beautiful shade trees people take down with, just very thoughtlessly, so part of it is so that people value the trees that they have.
Yeah, our work is only for public trees, and so to expand it to...
So that was the direction that we were, that I think we were trying to go, and I don't think we should...
Brian, I think this was your...
Yeah, I think Brian brought up the idea of a Tree City.
Well, once, yeah, once we had this idea of potentially a goal of planting more trees, this was a program I was familiar with. And I have a question, would there be a benefit to have a more formal relationship, especially with this passing off, you know, after three years with the village?
Yes, it would very much be, for the benefit of the trees and of the village, it certainly would be a wonderful thing to have a better...
Right, because, you know, when I think about, you know, the way the structure could be, it doesn't mean that the Tree Committee would change as much as, you know, a more of a formal advisory relationship to the village, so that we better understand how to plan things and care for.
Yes, and we need to, we need to plan better too, because until recently, we've been able to plant trees wherever we wanted to, but now we've kind of saturated the village with trees, and we have to collaborate... And we have to collaborate with Jason and others regarding where we want to plant a tree. So, the better, the more cooperation we have, the better.
So, that's what I see as a potential benefit, is this then, you know, kind of puts in place a policy where, you know, we're formalizing that relationship.
But I think it needs to be formalized. I think they need to do it together. I don't think just applying and becoming a Tree City first makes sense. I think they need to work together to create what would be the best thing for us to do moving forward. If being a Tree City is part of that, then we do that. But I think that they need to work together.
Agreed.
I mean, I feel like we've got an organization that's doing a good job.
Absolutely.
And why, you know, why change that unless, we need to make it better. We need to make it better, support them and support the village.
Right. I think that's what this is about.
Right.
Well, I think in order to apply, you kind of have to have these standards in place.
Right.
And they take a little bit of work to get those in place.
So, I guess, Patty, I mean, I'm not sure what you were planning on doing with the application.
Again, I only brought this because council requested I bring it. It was not a personal goal of mine. I will say that I have several sample tree ordinances and also that, right now, we already spend more than $2 per capita as far as the budget on the program because of all the tree trimming that we do.
But does that really count as tree care?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Trees need to be trimmed and the-
But it's trimming, it's not, it's trimming so that they're not in the wires. It's not about the trees.
But we also do other trimming. We do, we do trimming of dead limbs. We take the trees out. We just took unfortunately some very large but very hollow trees out over on-
Glen Street, in front of my house.
Yes. So, we do plenty of other things besides that.
Yeah. But trees require a lot more care and trees that are planted in urban settings are not in their natural habitat and they require more care than typical forest trees. And they don't live as long, so they have to be replaced more often. So, it's a big job.
Well, I wonder if then maybe the next step, you know, just is this idea of thinking about, planning for the spring to do, to start doing more tree planting and education around the energy benefits of trees, all the benefits of trees. There's a lot of benefits. And, I mean, so I don't know if the Tree Committee would, and if the village was willing to put, I don't know, think about, we haven't decided, maybe $5,000 towards, you know, ordering trees in the fall. I don't know, you know, maybe we, maybe you could give us a suggestion if we wanted to do this kind of thing.
We could talk about that.
So, maybe, yeah.
How about if Anna and Melissa and I work together and try to come up with a little bit more formal arrangement?
Sure.
And then we'll go from there.
That sounds great.
Thank you for offering to support more trees and y'all love it.
Well, and we love the work that you guys do.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Do you want to hear from anybody else that they also want to say?
Please.
I've got another Tree Committee member, Mrs. Anthony Lewis.
Okay.
My name is Robert Gage. I'm a member of the Tree Committee. You know, I feel very strongly on this issue of remaining autonomous. We have for years now planted in excess of 2,000 trees in the village. I hear this issue brought up of planting more trees. We're at this set point where our urban forest, our urban forest canopy is, makes everyone else jealous. We go to a Tree Commission Academy with other, other towns and cities that are building a Tree City program, which has now floundered and gone away. You know, like Xenia, close out to McDonald's here, where the tornado kind of prone area, they, they have such a limited forest cover there that it's, it's really incumbent upon them to plant trees by the hundreds. We look for holes and spaces in the existing inventory that we generate and plant in holes and spaces where trees have failed or places where there is a legitimate hole here in a tree lawn somewhere. We have trouble placing trees in parks, in part, you know, like Mills Lawn, we do the two trees a year at Mills Lawn. We keep open areas accessible in Ellis Park. There's not, there isn't an abundance of space here. A simple Google Earth search, you just look above the village and see the forest cover. It's absolutely substantial. And our group has worked well for such a long time now with relatively no money or no money at all from the village, mainly coming from, you know, donations and memorials for people that have lost someone, very personal experiences, wonderful experiences, planting trees for people who have lost someone, placing items of significance underneath the tree, these things. So, I don't understand how making this jump makes us any better or more effective. I really think it doesn't. I think that perhaps it gives the village a little bit more oversight on where we do our plantings, but these are all things that, you know, after Mr. Kennedy stepped aside and Chris and I are working on the sites, we are using more map, more modern practices in siding trees and selecting species. So, we are moving forward and trying to get better and trying to plant in areas that need the trees and staying off the areas that don't. So, I really don't see the benefit. I think that we, you know, we give away trees every day for Arbor Day. We satisfy, I think, at least two or three of the requirements for a Tree City on our own, and we have for some time now. The only thing that we've done, we occasionally ask the village to get out and do some pruning work and those things, which is hard and it doesn't fit within our budget. So, yes, we can use help to help maintain this, our urban canopy, but point blank is, we're planting, I planted 18 trees this spring. We're probably going to hit 20 trees in the fall. And, I mean, we are nearing or at capacity. I worry about meeting some of these goals set forth by the Tree City program. But mainly, my main concern is I don't think that we could do it any better than we have been. And I think the village is lucky to have this nonprofit around. I think that we've done a bang-up job for a long time here and I don't see how we can improve it much other than what we're doing actively now.
I think we're asking for a meeting to talk about it and coming up with some ideas to move forward. I think we're supporting what you're saying, so.
Wonderful.
Thanks, Rob.
And I do just want to follow up because, you know, when I read the requirements, I don't, we're not thinking about a commission of council or anything like that. You know, the setup can be our parks departments in charge from our end, you guys playing that advisory role and just making that relationship clear, if it makes sense. But if you guys think it's a bad idea, then I don't think we'll-
I think we just need, rather than continue to talk about this, I think we just need staff and the Tree Committee to work together. I don't, I mean, we could keep talking in circles. We've got a lot of stuff on the agenda.
I just want to add one little thing. So, just, you know, you're planning in public, well, so the question, I have two questions for the Tree Committee to consider when they, when you meet with Patty. One is planning the, the education that people, you know, like I say, maybe people are just cutting trees down that need to be cut down, but sometimes you see trees come down that look like they, you know, didn't need to come down, you know? And, and you're planting mostly in public settings and I'm thinking more as shade for homes, you know, potentially, you know, not in public settings and sort of assisting with that. So, that's, I'll just leave those questions to you guys. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to the CBE conversation, Brian.
So, yeah, I just want to, at our last meeting, we talked about having a second CBE conversation on June 28th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And that was to focus on fleshing out the covenants. I just wanted to make sure that we are moving forward with that because the Economic Sustainability Commission will be meeting on Wednesday. So, yep.
I won't clear.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. So, then, and then we decided the location will be Rooms AMB. So, June 28th is a Wednesday, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., Rooms AMB. And the focus is on understanding the covenants and the restrictions that they put on the property. And I think that can also be an opportunity to expand on some of the data that Melissa provided related to scenarios of what could happen in terms of how it could economically benefit the village and address affordability. So, okay.
Great. Mary Ann, housing needs assessment update?
Yeah, we had a stakeholder meeting on Friday?
Friday.
Not Friday, no, because- Thursday.
Thursday, maybe, no.
Okay, last week sometime. There were about 10 people there from the senior center and different organizations. And we got some interesting data about the village, not real surprising, other than I wasn't aware that 45% of the village population is 65 and older and 30% is 75 and older. And by 2020, it's projected to be 60% 65 and older. But other than that, I mean, we know that we're an aging community. We found out that the housing needs that, well, that all kinds of housing are needing, needed. But the particular, the biggest need is what I would say modest, modest, small homes and apartments. So, we had this meeting and I'm just, wanted to bring this back to council to say, I think we're ready to, one, probably start developing an RFP and, two, reaching out to the potential resources, whether they're financial resources or resources of data. And I'm not exactly sure the timing or who should, whether just to give this to staff and tell them to go for it.
Yeah.
Or what? Or I'd happy, be happy to talk with you, Patty, about sort of the three of us.
I mean, didn't we get kind of a sample RFP from some folks?
From Homing?
I mean, no, I thought we got a sample RFP from Boe.
He said he would provide one, but he didn't. I don't think he provided it.
Well, I think Emily has it and she did, she sent it to me, yes, so.
So, that would be, I mean, that seems to be a great place to start. I think, I mean, maybe what you're asking for, so it was a successful meeting, the community was, the people we talked to were very excited. We actually, I mean, there was a realtor there, Joel Dunphy was there. People were very excited about the information that's going to come out of this and they think it's very important. And I've actually talked to the school board and nobody was able to be there, but they're also very interested and supportive. So, I think that there are some potential financial partners. I think probably what Mary Ann is looking for is just, you know, for council to just affirm to continue to move forward.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Go for it.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Okay, we're on to new business. The item is lodging tax discussion. I am going to turn it over to my colleague, Brian House, and recuse myself. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a discussion that we agreed last year that we would have relating to one of the few taxes that a municipality can assess, and that is a lodging tax. And I think, Melissa, you kind of took the lead on this, so maybe you could start with what you've learned so far?
Yeah, unfortunately, tonight, we're not going to have a lot of information in which to discuss. Basically, what I had found, let me flip to the correct page here. Basically, what I've found was that there are a lot of nuances in regulations as they relate to a lodging tax. I had discovered that the county is able to implement their own lodging tax, the municipality in which the hotels and motels are located in are able to implement their own municipal lodging tax. I had called over to Green County to the auditor's office, since they are the distributor of the taxes, and they had sent me over to the commissioner's office. And I had actually spoken to the lady that collects the tax on behalf of the county for lodging tax. And she told me that she, she has been collecting a 3% lodging tax for lodging establishments within the village. And so, I was actually unaware of that because I hadn't done a lot of research on this other than some preliminary stuff back a year ago in terms of numbers and estimations. So, since the county has their own 3% lodging tax, it kind of creates a different set of regulations for us as a municipality. So, I'm trying to understand exactly what that means and unfortunately, it's taken a lot of collaboration. I've reached out to, I've reached out to, again, to the individual at the commissioner's office who is going to have to talk to the prosecutor's office. I wasn't able to get any information back for tonight. I have also reached out to OML because the ORC, as it pertains to lodging tax, where I've developed several questions as it relates to what it means for us since the county has their own tax. They had, somebody had given me some information, but basically, it was just a piece of information that said that it no longer applies to establishments with more than five rooms. Now, it applies to all establishments, no matter how many rooms. And basically, somebody from their legal team was going to be getting back with me that did have more information in terms of the lodging tax and what it means for us since the county does have one. So, I know that that was a lot without saying anything, but basically, the county has one and I'm trying to determine what that means for us in moving forward. And unfortunately, I don't have those answers yet.
Have you talked to other cities in Green County that do?
Well, this is interesting because everybody else, there is some grandfathering that has occurred because most of the other municipalities have had hotels in existence for a very, very long time. Cedarville is the only one that is smaller and that has had a hotel that has opened within the last, I think, maybe 10 years. It could be longer than that. My memory is not that great in terms of when that actual establishment opened. Unfortunately, Cedarville does not have a organizational structure such as the Village of Yellow Springs, so it's, it's been very difficult to try to talk to anybody from there. So, I'm working on that as well. So, everybody that I was able to talk to have had their, have had their hotels for a very long time and they do have their own taxes. But like I said, I think that there's some grandfathering. If you look at the ORC as it relates to lodging tax, there's probably about 50 different dates referenced and it's very legal. So, again, I've reached out to OML to try to help us with our particular situation and what that means for us.
I mean, one thing that the, some of the information that Melissa gathered shows that 77 of the 88 counties in Ohio do levy the county lodging tax. Each year, it's increased with municipalities that have started to assess it. So, currently, there are about 50 villages. I mean, we could get the exact numbers about that. Melissa, I'm curious, is the county collecting this tax on both above five rooms and below five rooms? Did they confirm that?
I have not confirmed that.
Okay.
Did I understand from your memo that the, is this something you do know for sure? Is that the altogether, between the county and the municipality, it can't be greater than 6%?
That's correct. The county is able to lodge 3%, or establish a 3% tax, which they have, and then the municipality can establish up to a 3% tax on its own. However, there are some stipulations because if the county has a tax and the municipality does not, it means one thing that I'm trying to clarify. And if the county has a tax and then the municipality enacts their own tax, then that can mean some other things, whereas we would not be collecting 100% of a 3% tax, it seems. So, it's, it's very, it's very interesting. Some of the things that I've kind of uncovered and what it means for us is just still very much up in the air. But yes, 6% total tax payable by the consumer, or the customer at the establishment is what it equates to maximum.
Except for a few special cases where larger municipalities are building stadiums, but that would not apply to us. What it does appear to say though is if we do not establish a tax for Yellow Springs, then the county is supposed to give us back some of that 3%. And so, the way the law states it is they can give up to 1%, a third of their 3%. And so the way the law states it is, they can give up to 1%, a third of their 3%. But that's one of the things we've got to figure out because they've never done that, even though the law requires it. And it says up to a third, but they have the discretion.
And that's where the prosecutor gets involved to answer that question.
Right.
I, I would like to at least introduce the idea of widening this discussion. We've talked about other sources of income before, including the reciprocal income tax and looking at that. I forget what the other, oh, charging for events. Remember, staff didn't work on that and then that sort of slipped along. And actually, as someone who has had a short-term stay place and a, and does Airbnb, these taxes, I know, don't apply to us. But I would be happy, and I bet a lot of other people would be willing, to do a voluntary tax. And I know that there are some retired people, and we've been approached by a retired person, Judith and I, I think, or Karen and I, I guess, about someone who wants us to be charging retired people income tax, which we can't by, per the state regulation. But we could do a donation kind of thing. So I'm just suggesting that we throw open this ball of wax worms, whatever, to look at the various income sources and sort of push this all together. And I guess I want to know if staff and other council people are supportive of that.
It's a fine idea, but as we can see by the meeting tonight, we've got so many things that we are working on that, I mean, I think, looking at this discrete, discrete question of, of the lodging tax should be the first step. And then, you know, I mean, and then in our free time to the future, we'll start looking at some of these other questions, but that would be my view.
Okay, so I think we have several people that want to speak. Any other comments or questions from council? Who would like to comment first?
You say that this tax will be applied to?
Could you state your name just for the record?
Becky Campbell. You say that this tax would be applied to anywhere from one person on up? Are you going to hit the people who are renting out their bedrooms? And the B&Bs already established, I think, up until now, it's been five rooms? And below, they don't have to do taxes?
And Melissa can answer.
Yep.
It appears that there has been a change in law where it would, it would affect establishments. And I don't think, now, I don't know, I don't remember off the top of my head what the date of this, this change was.
2001.
It was. So that was before the era of Airbnbs. But I believe, the way that I read it, is it's just related to establishments. So a bed and breakfast that would have two rooms would now be required to pay that tax. Whereas, in the past, it was only rooms that were five and above.
When did you say this change happened?
2001.
Well, I, when, when I did the short-term stay place, which I stopped a couple of years ago, I was paying tax.
County tax?
No, not county tax. I was paying it to the state. But then, then when I talked to the state, they said I didn't need to be paying it.
Yeah.
So I don't think a small, one-place thing.
It's, you, it's the way you pass your lodging tax now. So the municipality and the county can make a choice, is my understanding. We need to clarify that. But you can make a choice to stick with five or more rooms or to include it for all establishments. And it applies to what they call transient guests. So it would not be short-term rental, but it could potentially apply to Airbnb.
Well, we all know that the, the target for this is a new hotel, which I think is pretty sad for you to, to attack them on this. I don't feel that they need a hotel tax. Jim's trying to keep his charges down so that he can have customers and customers that are satisfied with the hotel. And we give so much money away in this town, I don't know why you want more. And a hotel tax would be more. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. And I do just want to emphasize that this is something we promised, that we would discuss, and that's all we're doing at this point. We're not, we're not making any decisions. Okay. Anyone else would like to speak? Jim?
Jim Hammond with the Mills Park Hotel. This came up about a year ago and the council decided to give the hotel about a year to get better established, the business portion of things. And we're going to need a lot more time than that. It's, there's a lot of challenges, there's a lot of unknowns. We have fluctuating, you know, occupancies. We, our costs are variable all over the place. Our, you know, the property tax is about over twice estimated. The utilities is close to twice and it's going up. So we have a lot of, a lot of challenges. And what we need to do right now is focus on raising our occupancy is how we address these challenges. So this, this tax, you know, an excise tax is a consumption tax. It's going to reduce consumption, is what a tax usually does. So it's not going to help us raise our occupancy rates to, to meet our, our goals. So I don't think it's going to be advantageous right now. I kind of propose we give it some more time to, we were a new business, we just started from scratch, we, we've got a long way to go. And a lot of unknowns still. We don't know the, the total overall economic impact of the hotel on the village. You know, we, we know the tax, some of the tax stuff and payroll taxes and all that, but there's a lot more impact on the village that we, we should be able to measure at some point, you know, increase economic activity and that sort of thing. So it sounds like, again, you guys got some questions, some unknowns yourself. So I think it'd be good to, you know, give us some more time to, for us to get a handle on how things are, so.
Thanks, Jim. Lisa?
Hi, my name is Lisa Goldberg. I'd like to echo some of what Mr. Hammond just said. I believe that this village really needs to do more to bring new businesses to town and encourage them and support them. This hotel, if I'm not mistaken, employs approximately 60 employees, 55 employees. That's something that we've been looking for businesses to do, to employ large numbers of people. As most of us know that own businesses or have worked in businesses, it usually takes at least five years for a new business to become a strong, successful business. And I just think this is really the wrong time to be talking about a tax on a new business. In addition to that, as a side note, if something like this does happen, I do believe that a tax should be put in place for Airbnbs. Airbnbs don't pay any tax, whereas Mills Park is paying a multitude of taxes. So I would personally prefer seeing some kind of a tax and regulation code be put in place for all these Airbnbs that are popping up all over town. And that is, as we know, are taking away rentals. So that's, that's my viewpoint. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, you folks don't know me, but my name is Stuart Zaharic. I'm from a nearby community called Cedarville. I would just want to take a few minutes to let you know that Mills Park is not a competitor. Mills Park is an ally. I also want to let you know that you have no louder cheerleader in Cedarville than Hearthstone and in Suites. Hop on your bike trail, go on up to Cedarville, get off and walk right into our lobby. I will be the first to tell you that I derive probably $15,000 to $20,000 per year of revenue as a direct result of Yellow Springs. And we probably spend a lot of it at the brewery coming down, Becky. But anyway, I just wanted to give a little preface, a little primer on the hospitality industry. I'm not an expert, but like Jim, it started with an idea and it started with a whole lot of sacrifice. I know nothing about Jim's portfolio. I know nothing about his financial background or his business acumen. I don't know any of that. But I do know one thing, that when I look at that building, I see a lot of sweat, I see a lot of equity, I see a lot of risk. Because before there was a hotel in Cedarville, we have Cedarville University, obviously, many thousands of students. But people would think, can you really build a hotel and make it, what happens when the students leave and go home? So I did, by, oh, by the way, I have 18 years of higher educational administration before I got into hospitality. At a certain point, I thought, well, it's time to move on. I did my diligence and I saw several things. I saw, number one, it's a vibrant community, but we have Yellow Springs. Yellow Springs is a brand. Yellow Springs is a commodity. And Yellow Springs, you know, can sustain itself through tourism. Not so much Cedarville. So tourism is not something that we built Hearthstone and in Suites to support, although we would love to have it. Matter of fact, if you know anything about Cedarville, the average business probably spends 25, 36 months and it's gone. There's not a whole lot of sustainability in commerce in Cedarville. It's such a small town, not much parking, but it's different here. So we had Yellow Springs, I had Cedarville University, then this new thing. They all of a sudden started taking up these, these railroad ties right around 1995 and 96. And they talked about this bike trail coming in. All of a sudden, there's a bike trail. Now, at any one point in time, I can look back on 15, 16 years of experience and say, Yellow Springs is probably 10% to 15% of my business. The bike trail is probably about 10% of my business and it's seasonal. Cedarville University is probably about 50% to 55% of my business. And just like Jim, will experience, if he hasn't already, it's really tough between December and February and Grad Hong Day. All that being said, I have about 15 years' worth of experience in cash flow, understanding the risk and knowing what the, what most of the pitfalls are. No one told me that when I hired someone at, let's say, $8 an hour, I really was paying out of pocket $12 an hour or, you know, 11, 12, because there were other benefits that had to come. Social Security and all those other things had to go along with it. No one told me that. No one told me that I would be paying property tax on my building as though I lived in a million-dollar house. Nobody told me that. A little sidebar here. If you all read the newspaper, you know Jim's property costs a little more than $1 million. And if you look at your own house assessment and taxes, you know it's tied to the value of your house. Therefore, if his hotel costs four times more or more than mine to build 15 years ago, he's probably paying four times more in property taxes out of his revenue stream. And that's money that comes directly out of the revenue that flows through Mills Park. Another thing, the national, the national standard or average of occupancy is somewhere between 60 and 63%. And we also live in a world where we have hotels.com, Expedia, booking.com, Orbitz, and all the other televised commercials that you see. All these are called online travel advisors or agents, OTAs. The OTA's control the lion's share of the market and an OTA picks up between 20 and 30% of the revenue of any hotel. Hotels then have to artificially inflate their prices and then they also have to advertise on television. Neither Jim nor I have the benefit of going on TV. We don't have any roaming gnomes, we don't have any sea captains, we don't have any fancy commercials or Star Trek representatives going on television to support us. All we have is our good name and what we offer. So all that being said, when you are a national franchise, you have brand recognition. But when you're Mills Park or Hearthstone and in Suites, you're who? You're what? Because we're not a franchise hotel or motel, we're not in the Walmart game of pulling in numbers like off the expressway where you're pulling in 80%, 90% occupancy and just running people through. Jim has built the building that I wish I could have built, but I couldn't. Well, because we didn't have enough property, first of all, and I didn't have the resources to do that. But to see a building like this structure with Amish furniture and all the ambiance that he has, this is an amazing thing. Now, when you start a hotel for the first time, you have an influx of curiosity seekers that want to stay there, that happened to us. And as, as time goes by, they become regular loyal customers. Now, for us, because we have Cedarville University, these are families coming in with students. And it's constantly changing, year after year after year. It might be a little bit different in terms of a dynamic here in Yellow Springs, where we have a wonderful hotel catering to a certain segment, his costs are higher, his prices are higher because he has to get back some of that money that he put out. So with that, I would expect him, Jim, to take probably anywhere between five and seven years before he can get stabilized because we don't have a Cedarville University here. Antioch has opened and closed five or so times in its history and it's just now getting its breath back. And I understand that Antioch Midwest is possibly relocating and there might be a market segment being lost there. There's a lot of dynamics going on with the economy, the aging of a population. And as the boomers get older and there are less dollars because of whatever happens in social security in the next few years, there's some unknowns out there. And what Jim is trying to do is maintain his position in an industry which is now really posed, poised against the independents. Because we don't have the franchise power, we now have the Airbnbs coming in, we have supported the B&Bs in Cedarville, in, in Yellow Springs for years. How, however, before Jim even built his hotel, I must have been spending half of my time, $10,000 to $15,000 a year sending to Springfield. $10,000 to $15,000 a year sending to Jeffersonville, to which people would say, where? But I'd send them there.
Stuart, I'm sorry. We have a three-minute time limit and we've kind of gone beyond that, so if you can...
I'm, I'm an avid supporter of Mills Park. I am available, if you have any questions you wanted to ask me, call me at Hearthstone and in Suites, Stuart Zaharic, 766-3000. I'll be happy to sit down in your office, just take me out to the brewery and let's talk. But, but Jim is, has done amazing work there and we are his partner in the industry. I just want to let you know that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, sorry, Paul, you're next.
Sorry, Paul. Kurt Butler, lifelong resident in Yellow Springs. Excuse me for having to use a wrinkled up note out of my pocket, but I want to try to keep within this three minutes. So I want to start by just going back, all the way back to when, when we made the agreement with DMS and awarded them a tax abatement. I applaud you for the work that it took to bring that business to town and I'm thrilled to death to have them here. So the $300,000 that we are abating over the next 10 years, I think is a, you know, is a small price to pay for having a business like that in the community. So my question is, comes to, why, when the Mills Park Hotel requested a little bit of tax assistance and abatement on the front end of things, until they could get their feet firmly planted and established, did we deny that? So that's one question that I have for council. You know, when we brought them in, they committed to bringing, you know, their company to Yellow Springs. And with that, they brought all of their own employees with them. Along with that, they committed to hiring new employees within a specified period of time. And I think initially, that was 16 and I'm, I'm pretty sure they probably exceeded that. But in a situation like this, we've got a longtime member, lifelong member of Yellow Springs that's committed private funds to building an incredible hotel in Yellow Springs and has produced 55 new jobs to Yellow Springs, has paid $116,000 in property taxes and his utilities are a 50K plus. You know, and I would encourage council to embrace the hotel and perhaps show a little bit more support for the hotel. From my perspective, it's been, the love has been a little tough to come by. I don't know if I've exceeded my, my timeframe, but back in 2014, Yellow I don't know if I've exceeded my timeframe, but back in two thousand fourteen, Yellow Springs News reported that Jim had made it perfectly clear that he was willing to stop construction on the hotel if we moved forward with this, with this increase in taxes. And yet, here we are again, talking about it again. I just think that it reeks of a quick money grab and that, like, excuse me, Mary Ann, I wanted to call you Mary Ann, but Mary Ann had alluded to pursuing some other possible increases in our, in our income, rather than hammering a new business, trying to get established in Yellow Springs with this additional tax. Thank you.
Thanks. Paul? See, I'm not used to looking over there, because...
Yeah, I know. Paul, been here about fifty years. Pretty much Curtis just said what I was going to say. We brought DMS from Dayton, an out-of-town company, gave them a good deal. They were strangers, but you gave them a good deal. And my understanding is they want to keep getting a good deal. Jim is not just a new guy in town, he's several generations going back in this town. He brought his own money. He didn't come to the village and say, I want two or three million. He put millions of his own money into taking a property that sat there for the last fifteen or twenty years with a dump house that wasn't even good enough for anybody to rehab. It ended up getting burned down, because anybody looked at it, it was junk. Most of the trees were already infected with borer, so all those nice trees people yelled about, he didn't even throw those away. He took them, had them milled up kiln dried, and he built stuff in the place. Disclosure, I made money. I built the sixteen tables in there. But on top of that, he has produced, as they say, fifty-five employees, as well as sales tax. He's increased the property tax tenfold. He weren't getting any hundreds of thousands a year off that property, on that old junk house. So, that helps the school. And personally, I've had at least three of his clients look me up and spend thousands on my furniture, and have it shipped to California and other states. One, an Air Force Colonel who was in Wall Street after the Air Force and in the hotel industry, loves his place and regularly calls me. He'll be back here. He's talking about coming back and buying everything in my showroom and putting it in a truck and taking it to California. So, that's just from one person who stayed in his house for two days. That's how impressed he was with the quality of what he built in the middle of our town, regardless if it looks like a white mansion, blah, 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 blah. I've heard all the hate about it. But the reality is, all he did was pour his whole soul, and his family's soul, into the history of his town, going back to his grandpa or great-grandpa, founding Hammond Dryright right down on Dayton Street. So, he and a stranger from Dayton called DMS, he's one of us. And I say, give him five years. That's what I've been saying since the beginning. If you can give DMS years of tax abatement that's not getting school anything off property taxes, he could get a five-year abatement, let him get up and running, then come hit him with a sales tax, right? Because the tax isn't on him. The tax is on the guy that's coming from California to stay, who's rich enough not to care, by the way. But even he said, no, give that guy five years. He said, I was in New York, Trump kind of stuff. He goes, that kind can kill you in the competitive world. So that's all.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Any other comments? Yes.
Hi, I'm Susan Butler. I'm a thirty-four-year resident of Yellow Springs. Started working at the mill with Jim, saw how good and his blood sweat that he put into that. Asked me a long time ago if I'd help him run an eight-room B&amp;B, was going to just rehab an old house, and then thought, well, I could bring jobs, I could bring business to town, I could help support all the other businesses in town. So it went from eight rooms to twelve rooms to twenty-eight rooms. It has done nothing but bring business to all the other small businesses in town. He has brought fifty-five jobs, he's given me a job. I love working there. I couldn't ask for a better boss, a better family to work for, and I hope that you guys take that into consideration. Come support us. There's a lot of faces here I've never seen there. We are part of Yellow Springs, we all live here, and we all pay our taxes. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. Any other comments? Yes.
My name's Mako Williams, so I'm from the mills. So, I guess my whole thing is, we do, you guys talk about a lot of seniors and stuff in this community. Well, we do a lot of, like, we take a lot of customers from that here. So, our market is pretty much baby boomers, senior citizens. So, you know, they're on fixed incomes, things like that, so they don't really have, they're pretty peculiar about what the prices are. As a whole, we get that talk all the time when making reservations, how much is the total, you know, we want to know what the final is. So if you keep adding taxes, it kind of persuades them to go other places that offer different entitlements. For instance, we're not as big as, like, the Hiltons, Merits, IHG, so we don't offer those programs. Well, we offer something more. We offer this community that doesn't have to be like everybody else. So, in words, we don't have to keep adding taxes to make, to bring value to the hotel, so, I mean, to the community. So, I guess my whole thing is, like, when we're, the hotel... I mean, like, Jim's, you guys, like, Jim's, like, one of your own, and, like, I don't understand why you do this to one of your own in the community. Like, there's other communities that, I don't understand, they would take this hotel and put it in their property if they could lift it off the foundation. But it's like, you guys, I just hope that you guys do away with the tax, because it just, it doesn't make sense, because, you know, the Hammond's are one of your own people, I mean, just to help them. I mean, that's, I mean, that's the wish. I mean, I guess, from this, is just, you know, people are, you know, the Hammond's are good people, so if we can just kind of not tax, you know, making money off, just, you know, because you can, you know, we just need to build value to the community, take care of the community, and then take care of our own.
It's clear that you care deeply about this, and also about the Hammond family. Thank you.
Thanks.
Monica Lindsay, also with the Mills Park Hotel. As you can see, this is very... So my name is Monica Lindsay, and I'm also with the Mills Park Hotel. As you can see, this is very emotional for us all. We spend a lot of time at the hotel. We spent, Mako started before I did, I've been there right before we opened. So I don't know the family, and I'm imported from Germany, I'm a new citizen to the United States, I've been here about three years. I don't know nothing about the history. I came to Yellow Springs, my father-in-law brought me here, and I fell in love with the town right away. And I was able to get the job at the hotel, and I was so proud. It was, I get to work in Yellow Springs. I get to work at this new hotel. And spending a lot of time there and getting to know the owners, Jim is hardworking, Ms. Libby is always out donating money, helping other people, helping good causes, Katie always works really hard in the kitchen, just the whole dynamic of what they're trying to do for the town. You're always here, let's do this, it's good for the town, let's do this, it's going to help people. So, they are looking out for the town and for the benefit of what they can do, and I really look up for that. I think that is a wonderful thing to do. And we work really hard, tirelessly at the hotel. Twelve, fourteen-hour shifts sometimes, we put in sixty, seventy hours, Suzie's always along with us. So it becomes emotional, because we get to experience the wonderful guests that we have, we get to experience the wonderful stories people tell us. We make, you know, we get to experience the good and the bad. There's been bad, there's been growing pains, everybody goes through, but we also know we're nowhere near being able to carry more tax. It's going to, it's going to suffocate the business. So, also from my end, for the fifty-five people that work there, and for all the guests that get to experience Yellow Springs. And we're advocates to Yellow Springs. We go to Columbus, we attend bridal shows, we try to bring business to Yellow Springs, we try to bring groups to Yellow Springs, to help, to bring money into the town. We don't go and sell the hotel. Where's the hotel at? If it's outside of Yellow Springs, if the hotel wasn't seen yet, we are advocates for Yellow Springs, and we love doing that. So that's also on my end. Just give Mr. Jim and the family and everybody at the hotel a break, so we can be there ten, twenty, fifty years from now and still do, maybe I won't be there anymore, but we still want to be able to provide a good service and keep the standards up. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Any other comments? Okay. Patty, can we answer the question that I guess Kurt raised?
Which?
About the tax abatement?
The DMS tax abatement?
Yeah, and then I guess also why Mills Park didn't, was denied the tax abatement?
I honestly cannot answer the second question, because I wasn't here during the discussions and didn't realize that they did not.
Yeah, I think we have to go back, Judy would have to go back through some council meetings and so forth to bring that back.
So I think that's the only outstanding question, but maybe, do you want to clarify what the DMS tax abatement is?
The DMS tax abatement is on new construction only. It is not on the existing buildings as they stand today. It is only on any new construction that, which is what we gave the extension for recently. And it will, I believe it's a ten-year tax abatement.
Okay. Judith, did you, I'm sorry. Yes?
Can I make another comment?
Sure, but maybe, quick.
Let's run a minute.
Okay.
So, maybe noting what Patty just said, the entire Mills Park Hotel is new construction. I mean, let's not forget that. This hotel was built from the ground up. It's also new construction, and they weren't given any tax abatements. So, again, let's support them, not hurt them at this point.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Well, I want to meet with Jim, we haven't had a chance to do that yet, but I guess I want to just say, this is a lodging tax discussion, and I hate to be seen as we're hostile to the hotel. We're not hostile to the hotel. It's been a wonderful, you know, new asset to the village, and I think everybody in the village recognizes that. Village is struggling around, you know, how to pay for the services that we provide, so we need to be looking at this. It's not just going to affect this hotel, it would affect all lodging establishments, I assume. And it seems to me like we need more information, but I hate to see it set up as, you know, we're hostile to the Hammond's, or we're hostile to this, you know, beautiful hotel. That's not, that's not the case. And obviously, we want the hotel to be successful. So, trying to, you know, we're just trying to look at, how do we pay for, you know, there are people having to leave the village because they cannot afford the taxes here and the utilities, and so on, we're having, we have a problem, so, you know, we're trying to address that. So, I just want to reset what this discussion's about.
Thanks, Judith. Jerry?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to say is, you know, I'm looking at this as an information gathering session as we did the last time. And we all know that this council doesn't act hastily unless it's an absolute emergency. I appreciate the folks that have spoken, and our staff does, and has been trying to give us additional information on the whole tax issue. And for myself, I will want to get all the facts in before I ask council to take a vote on this issue. And again, it's, I think the community as a whole appreciates what the Hammond's have done. All the comments that I've heard have been good about the hotel, the service and so forth. And of course, I want to look down from heaven in twenty years and see that the hotel is still surviving and so forth. But as a council member, we always have to look at, what's going to benefit the community as a whole? That's why we were elected and so forth. But be patient, I haven't put the hammer down on the yes and no vote yet, so more information to come. Thank you.
Great. Mary Ann?
No.
Good. Okay. So, yes, I want to emphasize, this was an initial discussion, we promised to have this discussion. I mean, again, it's important for us to hear, as Jerry said, some of the issues that could relate to the competitiveness of the hotel. I think there's no question about what a beautiful structure it is and how great it is to have it in the village for economic development as a whole, which is something that Patty talked about. I like Paul's examples, and I would hope that every shop downtown has an example where, many examples where they benefited from folks that have visited and stayed at Mills Park Hotel. So I think that's without question. So, you know, for us, establishing more understanding of the impacts that this tax can have, even though it's passed on to the consumer, that's very important. And as Jerry said, I mean, we're just trying to understand the issues. So, thank you to everyone that spoke tonight, and we will certainly be letting you know when this is next on the agenda, but we're not rushing a decision on this.
I was going to say, do we know, are we going to have the information for the next meeting? Is there...
What do you think, Melissa?
I'm waiting on information from OML in terms of interpreting the ORC as it relates to us, and I was also waiting on information from the Green County Prosecutor. So, the ball's kind of in those organizations' courts. So, I didn't have a date promised. I told them that I would really like to have the information for tonight, when I reached out to them at the beginning of last week, and I didn't get it, so...
Melissa, are you also looking for information regarding the county tax that's already in existence?
That's the, that's the bulk of my question right now.
All right, well, let's plan on having a follow-up discussion on the nineteenth, and we'll, you know, so, of course, the public's always invited, and we'll report back on whatever we have confirmed.
I was going to say, if we can't get the information by then, we should hold, we should hold the discussion, because obviously, we can't have a complete conversation about it if we don't have all the information.
We should have some updates.
Yeah. Okay, should we get Karen back in?
Yes, we should.
Remember, we said we're going to have a discussion in two weeks.
Thank you. We added a couple of additional items to the new business, the Paris Accord support. Mary Ann, you wanted to address that?
Yes. We received a letter from Laura Skidmore of the Mothers Out Front in Yellow Springs, which is a grassroots group of mothers, grandmothers, and other caregivers who are concerned about climate change. And they were making a request that Yellow Springs pass a resolution similar to what mayors and other cities around the country are doing in reaction to our president's pulling the United States out of the Paris Climate Accord. So, I have read this resolution that was submitted, and to me, it's a no-brainer for us to do this. The main thing is that we say that we will develop a climate action plan, we're already doing that, already looking for other ways of lowering our carbon footprint, and to be able to be in alliance with other communities around the country and other, all the other countries around the world, except Nicaragua and Syria, I think.
So this is something we can bring to the next meeting?
Yes, yes. So I'm going to request that Judy take that resolution, and if, Judy, if you see any things that you think should be tweaked, I'm happy to work with you on that and bring it back for the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thanks. And then Brian, complete Streets Workshop?
So quickly, we had a meeting this morning, and the plan is to have a half-day workshop for council, staff, and the Active Transportation Committee, since that will be a public meeting, others could come as well. Then to have a community engagement...
Then to have a community engagement forum to talk about Complete Streets, and then to follow that up by a working session, assuming that we're going to continue to move forward to craft a policy that could be recommended to council to consider. So Judy, what I was thinking is maybe you could coordinate finding a date that would work for people rather than take time now to discuss that.
Yep. Okay. Sounds good. On, we've done our reports, so we're on to future agenda items. We have a resolution regarding the tax budget for 2018 coming from the Finance Director. OPWC grant for stormwater mitigation. I'm sure we'll learn more about that. So are we doing the resolution for the adopting guidelines for policing? That's, okay, well, fiber advisory board report, are they ready? Are they going to be ready?
They, I do not believe are going to be ready now. That should probably be moved down to July.
Okay. Homing presentation, so I think Emily's coming to present on the Cemetery Street Project completion. We've had the HRC annual report added. We've had a resolution on the Paris Accord added, and we actually added before an executive session for the purpose of the review of a public official to review Patty.
We're going to continue the discussion about the lodging tax on the 19th.
And I don't know if the police guidelines will be ready. We haven't, we're still communicating with the 365.
Okay, so let's, okay, so let's take that off.
No.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay.
And then you had a potential ordinance for authorizing the sale of land if licenses were obtained.
Okay.
We'll know later.
Yeah, let's leave it, let's not put it on, but we'll, we'll note that that's, that that's a possibility.
And then the summer sewer ordinance just...
Oh, discussion. No, I think we need to continue it as a discussion.
Okay. Then we have the swearing in of Chief Carlson and also the HRC report.
Yeah, I already had that. And we'll also have, if we want to remind our commission folks to get the minutes in, we'll also have all of our commission reports. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.